Alrighty then, let's start again. Good evening, this is the Tuesday, November 16, 2021, regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission of New Canaan, Connecticut. Please advise everyone how you're going to run the meeting.
Take two, so maybe I'll get it right this time. So this meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission is a hybrid meeting, and we're gonna meet both virtually and in person. So if you're, we'll hear members of the public for each item, both virtually and in person. If you're, we'll hear from members of the public on an item first, if they're in person, and then we'll hear virtually from people. And you can raise your hand virtually, and we'll recognize you when that item is called. Any speakers in the room that are going to go to the podium, please make sure you speak into the laptop, so they can see you on Zoom.
Okay, thank you Lynn, and we'll do the roll call. John Goodwin, I am still here. John Chris.
Still here.
Krista Nielsen.
Here.
Dan Radman.
Here.
Clarissa Cornea.
Here.
Ken Turner.
Here.
Dick Ward.
Here.
Bill Williams.
Yeah.
Arthur Cassavant.
Here.
Chris Haring.
Here.
James Bass.
Here.
Okay, since we have a full complement of commissioners, we will not be seating alternates this evening. Once again, I would like to welcome Paul Knack to the commission. He was appointed this morning, but not sworn in, so he is not attending the meeting officially tonight. Nonetheless, Paul, why don't you give us, take, give us 30 seconds of a little bit about yourself? Thank you.
Yes, I'm a partner at the firm of Martha Colina. I had one matter where I actually represented the town of New Canaan on a zoning issue. I've had extensive experience in the town of Darien, where I lived for 50 years. I was chairman of the, what they called at that time, the Board of Tax Review, and now they call it the Board of Assessment Appeals, when I was in Darien. I also have extensive experience dealing with administrative hearings and proceedings in the state of Connecticut, particularly in the healthcare sphere. So I'm looking forward to participating in this organization.
Okay, welcome again. Okay, let's go with the public hearing item number one, Eight Ferris Hill Road. Upon application, Rob Sanders Architects authorized agent for Chris Shipper owners for owner for special permit approval, section 77, to allow construction of an addition over a setback on a non-conforming circa 1735 Hoyt Burwell Morse House in the Two Acres Zone at Eight Ferris Hill Road. Who is here to present?
Good evening, my name is Robert Sanders, of the firm Rob Sanders Architects in Wilton, and thank you for hearing us tonight. So we are applying for a special permit, and this is in regards to the Hoyt Burwell House on the corner of Ferris Hill Road and Canoe Hill Road. It was first constructed in 1735 and exists almost entirely within the front yard setback of the property. So we're taking advantage of the, this approach to see to it that we appropriately preserve the structure, and while we prepare to add an addition to the north. Some of you may remember that this property was originally bought by a developer, and there was a proposal for a large new house where this site plan, and I should, Lynn, can I share my screen?
No.
There, go, let's see. I don't know whether I can share my screen yet, let's see. There we go, okay, there we go. I'm still disabled, I'm sorry. At any rate, while that is, while that is getting prepared, there was a proposal to do a large new house on it, that did not go through. And so it has ended up with Chris, and there we go. Okay. And. Go. I'm now seeing, okay, thank you Lynn, that's fine. It has now, in the ownership of Chris and Dudley Shipper, and as I said, their intention is to add on to the structure. Our challenge is that it is virtually impossible to connect to the structure without stepping into the front yard setback. If you'll go down to the next screen, please. So this is a photograph of the rear of the house. As you can see, it's a kind of iconic salt box form. The part that projects closest to the camera, that kind of small box-like part, is the one part that actually steps into the conforming area of the property. The remainder of the structure is, is all fully within the front. If you go down to the next screen, please. So our proposal is shown darkened here with the diagonal line. The area that's very dark just shows you the area of expanded driveway. It is our intention to have drainage and septic system to the northwest of the existing house, as we improve this. The remainder of the lot will be undeveloped, and so let's slide down to our views here. So this is existing floor plan, whoops, just if you go up a little bit, you can see that it's, it's quite a small house. The first floor area is approximately 1,500 square feet. The original rectangular structure, which dates from 1735, was, had additions put on it late 19th century and early 20th century. The property is actually listed on the National Register of Historic Places, and I believe that it is the oldest standing structure in New Canaan. If you slide down a little further, second floor, keep going. So again, there's its exterior profile, and you'll see in a moment what we're planning to add. Keep going, thank you. Sorry about the rotation here. Round and around, one more time, there we go. So, starting at the top with the south elevation, you can see the profile of the front facade visible from Ferris Hill Road, and most important is east elevation, the second one down. Approximately correct, where the, there's a kind of a front porch, which has a horizontal roof and a door, that you see a single door there. That's approximately the line of the front yard setback, just a little to the left of your cursor. A little more, a little more, keep going over, see the dashed line there, right there, is approximately the setback line. So our projection into the setback is the extension of a roof, which allows us to connect the second floor to the existing second floor of the structure. Everything to the right of the cursor is in the conforming area. So the intention here is to have a, an addition that's deferential to the modest height of the existing structure, connecting around in a rather classic Connecticut form of additive shapes, to what will be a new barn-like shape, which will form the garage of the structure. The garage doors, on the south elevation, the barn profile is seen on the east elevation, the garage doors will face to the east, and the driveway, which will open from the existing driveway location, will bend around and service the doors there. The shippers want to keep the ability to service the back of the lot by having the driveway continued unpaved, but having the ability to bring tree surgeons or lawn service up the side of the building. I think you can roll down a little further, Lynn. Floor plans, this is the second floor plan. Whoops, I'm sorry, I was wrong. First floor plan, it's just twisted around. You can see the connection there, here's the first floor plan, and the dashed line that the cursor is on represents the setback lines of the property. We're gonna have a courtyard in the area, the shippers are very interested in gardening and intend to make nice on the property. We're preserving, there's a stone well in the front, which is mentioned in the National Register listing. So that's our basics there, and I think if you keep scrolling down, we go into an extensive description of the property, and that there is a preservation restriction and covenant on the property. We have applied to Preservation Connecticut for approval of the design. There was an earlier design approved adjacent to the existing house, but this is an evolution of that under our hand. So I think that probably covers the issues that I think are pertinent tonight, and I welcome your questions or comments.
Commissioners, questions?
Yeah, hi, it's Ken Turner.
Hi.
Hi. Like the, what you've done to kind of marry, marry the existing structure with the new, there's some sensitivity, and there's some good movement there that brings it all together as kind of one composition. I had a question on the, the site plan, it, it doesn't match your floor plans.
We're, we are evolving on the floor plan, because we are in the design process, so there's slight jigs and jogs. That floor, excuse me, the, the site plan, which was prepared by Peak Engineers, and what, what's happened is the master bedroom and bathroom that it connected to are, have swapped, and in the conforming area, the footprint has slightly changed there. We're not, you know, with this application, we're not, we're not making our application for a building department or health and all those yet. We need this first, to know that we can actually make the connection to the building. So we'll, we'll update those, and if you want to see the current one, I did ask Peak to update, they are swamped, Tom Quinn is swamped, and so he has not been able to get me an update yet.
Okay, would it be possible, could you put the site plan up on the screen? Not the one that I see right now, but the, the one from Peak.
Me or Lynn? Lynn's got it.
Lynn's got it. Yes, this one. Okay, so this one's different than what I have on my screen.
Did you open the, not the update, the, the update is not the most recent one.
Okay, because the one I'm looking at shows a separate detached house.
Yeah, no, that's not the correct one, it's the other file.
Okay.
You'd think the update was the new one, but the update is the old one, so.
Okay, yeah, now I see it now, and it, now it makes sense, it's connected.
We, we do have, we do have some twitches in the floor plan, but the basic concept of it is, is very close to what you see here.
Okay. Could you describe the materials a little bit, as far as what the materials will be, what colors? Are you gonna contrast the historical structure with the new? Are you gonna try and harmonize them so that it's one large house? What, what, what's your thinking?
We are, we are going to pretty much extend the palette of what you see there. They like the dark color of the house, that's probably many coats of paint, but it is shingle siding. The, they like the dark color, they like the red trim. My, we haven't gotten down completely to brass tacks, but it is our intention to extend the palette of materials. We've taken care, like, windows are nine over six, they're all actually remarkably uniform in size. The, so we've used that module pretty much throughout any of it, any elevations that are visible from the public. We did take some liberty in the proposed family room to have more glass around the fireplace there, because the, one of the best features of the views of the site is the view to the north and the yard area, where the stock, the dirt stockpile is shown, kind of that crescent up at the top of the screen at the moment. But the, there we go, the, the shake siding, wood trim, I would like it that we could afford a wood roof, but we don't have prices back yet. So it's possible that we will end up with an asphalt roof. But in general, we are staying quite close to the palette of what you see on the existing house. The shippers are undertaking shortly and have contracted with a preservation-oriented general contractor in Norwalk, the exterior restoration of the original house. So that's all under the observation of Preservation Connecticut, as well as hopefully our experience with older structures.
Okay, great, and one final question. There's a, I think an existing barn, or maybe it's another house on the very north part of the site, is that?
The, the existing garage on the, on the drawing here, you can see it up there, above the stockpile, there it is. That is a, that is a somewhat decrepit 1960s two-car garage with a screen porch on it. It is currently holding their furniture, and the intention is to take that down. They would like to hold the opportunity that they may someday build a guest cottage slash ADU kind of structure, but that's, there are no plans to do that in the near future. So once the, once the construction project being proposed now is completed, that building will go away.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anybody else?
I have a question, it's John Chris. What parts of the current structure are going to be dismantled as part of the intended expansion?
Very little. The, we're, on the interior, I can either, we can go down to the floor plan, or I can just work from here, where, just where it says story, oh well, okay, there we go, so if you stop there, Lynn, the kitchen, laundry, and bathroom on this level will be eliminated, they, they move into the new addition. So bedroom one becomes a kind of swing space of an office and bedroom. A new bathroom is located essentially where the stairs near bedroom one are, and we are, and putting a laundry in that area, so we are pushing through what is labeled living room, a connection to that bedroom that is a little bit more straightforward. And as part of this project, we are going to put in a new heating system, there's a square in the kitchen, which is a brick chimney from, you know, whenever an oil furnace was, oil boiler was put in the place, so we'll basically be passing through that area there.
Oh, part of a wall is gonna be, exterior wall will be taken away?
No, the perimeter that you see on this existing first floor plan remains the perimeter that you'll see on the, on the proposed structure.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else? Hey, Mr. Sanders, Mr. and Mrs. Shipper are aware of some of the restrictions that if we approve this special permit that come along with it, specific to modifications having to come before the planner, or the commission and other restrictions in the regulations?
Yes, they are.
Okay, great. Okay, everybody good?
Hey, John.
Yeah, Mr. Ward?
Uh, yeah, Dick Ward. I, I think I heard the presenter say that they still have to get approvals from other committees. I mean, is this ripe for approval by the P and Z now?
May I hop in here?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, just normal building permit approvals, so we don't, there are no wetlands on the site, for instance. This is certainly conforming as far as building area and, you know, site coverage and all those kinds of things that are normal. The health department, I believe, had approved of the seven-bedroom septic system design for the house that was never built. So we've done soils testing and all those kinds of things, so I'm quite confident that Peak has the, the health department issues under control. So the, and finally, Preservation Connecticut has the application in front of them, as far as their conservation easement on the property. You know, all's I can say is, I've won three awards from Preservation Connecticut for, and, and the American Institute of Architects in Connecticut on, on adaptive use projects, and have, I think, three also with New Canaan Preservation. So I think I know what I'm doing on this one. So, and, and the shippers are taking great care of it, so.
Okay.
I have one question, just to be sure, I want to be sure I'm clear on this, sir. John Chris, again, so the applicant is representing that the plan that is being presented to this commission has already been blessed by the holder of the easement, historic easement?
No, I'm not, it is in front of them now, it is not, they haven't come back with any response yet.
So they may have modifications which would nix this commission's approval?
I am confident that they will not. But I can't say that, you know, with 100% certainty, so it's, it's, it's in there concurrently with this current application.
Thank you. Mr. Chris, what we can do is weaken condition, if we approve it.
I wouldn't think that would be wise.
Yep, okay.
Yeah.
Done. Okay, let's open it to the public, would anyone physically present, sir?
Frederick Whitmer from 26 Ferris Hill, I'm the next door neighbor to this house. And for those of you who were on the commission, when the developer was here eight years ago, you may recall that I strongly opposed that application for a variety of reasons, which I will not reiterate here. I'm happy to say that I'm not here to oppose this application, but to express a, a substantial concern that I have with respect to it. I feel almost as if it's Old Home Week for me, because Rob Sanders is an extraordinarily talented architect. He did our renovation, and any renovation we will ever do, he will do. We had a 1739 house in Wilton, and he shows great skill and talent, and from an aesthetic and design standpoint, I have no, no qualms whatever with the application and/or, and/or with him with respect to this. My only concern actually relates, if you, could I ask you to put up the site plan, please, Lynn? My, our only concern relates to the expansion of the driveway. There is a swale between our property, which is to the west, to the, excuse me, to the east of the shipper property. The swale runs virtually through the property line. There's a little of swale on our, on our side, there's a little swale on their side, and it does a grand job of relieving water that comes in. This last summer and fall, I will tell you, put the swale to the test, and we've seen a lot of water collect at the rear of both our property and the shipper property, on a, an area that is actually belongs to the right-of-way on another Ferris Hill property that runs through the back, not currently being used as a right-of-way, but it's there. My concern is, as you can see, the expansion of the driveway goes considerably more to the east than the current driveway. That is done, I take it, in order to accommodate the, the ability to pull into the garage around the corner as opposed to the current driveway, which would be straight ahead in. This is not an aesthetic issue, it is an issue of, of concern, what happens when you, this new driveway is put in with the expansion to the east, which will encroach, if not be on the swale, and is covered with an impermeable surface? Water will have its way, irrespective of whatever anyone wants to do, and I am no engineer, and I do not know what the, the plans are with respect to this. I have great respect for the shippers, I wish them all the best, and their plans are wonderful. I just don't want a flood on the rains we've had coming in because the swale has been disturbed. I don't think that this is your jurisdiction, I don't believe it is, but I want to render this objection to what is being done here, in the hope that possibly, possibly, the driveway extension can be pulled back, and the shippers can pull straight into their garage, so you wouldn't have to worry about hitting the garage door when you turned left. In any event, from aesthetic standpoint, from a zoning standpoint, we have no objection. But we do have an objection with respect to the water, and I will say that our neighbor to the north, and north of the shippers recently called to my attention that a great deal of water had come into his property from our swale. So this is, this is not a hypothetical concern, it is one I'm sure the shippers would like to deal with, I'm sure it's one that this, Mr. Sanders would like to deal with, and I know it's one that the Whitmers would like to deal with. Thank you for your time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Whitmer. Anyone else in the room? Okay, Lynn, can you see if anybody in Zoom land from the public would like to comment on this?
If anyone on Zoom wants to speak on this matter, please raise your icon, the hand.
You're good? Okay, great. Mr. Sanders, any comments on Mr. Whitmer's input?
Yes, thank you. And I'm humbled by Whitmer's approval of the design intent. We, we have discussed this, and I appreciate Whitmer's concern about constricting the water flow in that area. If we can pop back to the site plan, please. Our favorite drawing. Here we go. Starting at the, right under the plus or minus, and the, and the rotate, whoops, nope, nope, stay, stay up a little, no, stay up a little higher, if you can just slide down, right there. So if you notice, there's an arrow pointing downward, as it describes the meets and bounds, and, and where it says fence there on the, on the eastern property line next to the Whitmer's property. There's a contour line 92, which is kind of drooping down and comes to, you know, pointing down towards Ferris Hill Road, and then if you trace the next one, which says 94, which kind of squiggles along the property line there, excuse me, in the center of things, and then finally 96, which is running right parallel to the existing unpaved driveway. So we will have contour changes in the area of the 96, that right where Lynn's cursor is, between 96 and 94, would be filled. The intended, the, the design as proposed essentially seats the garage surface and the driveway surface at that 96 elevation, that it steps down from the house, which is approximately four feet higher at first floor there. The intention is to have the driveway be permeable, and will be crushed stone, not asphalt, and yes, we will need to grade along that edge of the driveway. The, the mark, demarcation of silk fence would represent the extent of disturbance, or, and I, and I don't mean that to say that it's gonna fill all the way up to the northern extreme of the silk fence, but from the edge of the driveway as shown, to where the silk fence will either be sloped or have a combination of a short retaining wall to preserve the drainage area, because the, the shippers have no intention to increase the flow of water onto the Whitmer's property. The shippers have no intention to increase the flow of water onto the Whitmer's property. The both permeable driveway surface and the infiltration system, which is proposed. To the west or left of the house, that grid plan. Will take the roof drainage, which currently spills out simply to the grade. And get it into subsurface infiltration. So when we make this site plan, application is required for the building permit. This plan will be more developed and address concerns about maintaining the flow of the swale. It's our intention to try to, there's there's kind of scrub in between the. The proposed driveway and the property line of the shipper's property. The there are a couple of pine trees in there, right in that area, which will be taken out. But it's their intention to try to maintain the maple tree. Maple trees that are close to the property line, just at the bottom of the screen at the moment. There's twenty four inch maple there. And you know, you can, you can see infiltration for the driveway and infiltration from the house that's planned for subsurface water control.
Great. Okay, thank you. Question? Sure.
James Bash, is the intention once the site plan is more developed to have the town engineer examine the water retention?
I believe that's the normal process. Yes.
Is that something we have to condition or is that?
Yeah, we can discuss it. Probably not because, but we can discuss it.
Okay, this is Dan Radman. What is the? What is the material of the driveway paving?
It will be crushed down, probably piece down over over trap rock in filled areas. And there's no intention to to pave it. We're talking about. In the gardening and landscape ideas for the kind of space that forms a courtyard between the proposed building and the existing structure. That that might be paved with natural fieldstone so that you'd have, you know, plantings in between and. My concept is that that may even go into that parking tab that points towards the towards the house. There now. So but they they do not intend to pave it and. The existing driveway is crushed down and that's going to be graded out. As far as access there. So.
And you've got a catch basin at the end of the driveway going into the. Containment gallery there. That's basically dedicated to the driveway.
That's correct.
Okay, the series closed. Item number two, six seventy seven South Avenue upon application. Top man director of Public Works authorized agent for town in New Canaan owners special permit approval of section five one C one and five one E one to allow installation of an ice rink in Waveney Park. Recreational facility structures, new permanent facility for recreation of the Waveney Zone at six seventy seven South Avenue, gentlemen.
Thank you for having us. Tom O'Day will speak.
Yes. Thank you very much. I'm just trying to. Flip the screen. Here we go. Good evening. My name is Tom O'Day. With me is Keith Simpson and Jake Granito. As you know, Keith Simpson's landscape landscape architect and has had his hand in many different. Community projects here in New Canaan. Jake Granito is a former rink manager, one of the main rink managers of the Winter Club. Has agreed to help with this project. This project is a temporary outdoor rink. It's a basically a Pee Wee rink size one twenty by sixty. This project has been looked at. Keep going, Mr. O'Day. Sorry, this project has been in in, we've been trying to get this project done for a number of years since two thousand and six approximately. And it's morphed in different ways. We had suggested, we looked at many different places for the rink. And we came to within meeting with Park and Rec. The the area where had, we didn't know of any resistance was, as you can see on the the drawing there. Right at Waveney on the the. Stone parking lot area next to the softball field and next to the outdoor gym facility. There was some discussion about having this area paved. It's not going to happen this year, but that actually is fortuitous. I believe it's actually probably better because we can. Figure out where the best place for the rink to go in that parking lot area. In the east to west type range, you'll see the the restroom facilities which are being winterized. Shortly, and Tiger can speak to that. The proposed chiller would be just to the south of the. Restrooms and the Zamboni park just to the north of the restrooms. The there's a proposed tent that would go to the south of the chiller, the concrete pad. That would be a tent for checking in to get your ticket. And the people who would be operating the rink, we probably have two people would be stationed in there. One for operating the Zamboni and and doing various things and the other from just operating the. Whether it's the ticket counter or whatnot. You'll see there's plenty of parking left over for the use of the rink. And again, it would be up for potentially mid-December to. Mid February, maybe late February, depending on funding. We've raised approximately a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Where our goal is to raise another hundred and fifty. To cover the operational and capital costs for the two years. We're confident we can get there. We've met with a couple of donors that are very interested in in being big donors on the project. And I've got Keith here to answer questions with regard to the drawing. And I've got Jake here to answer any questions with regard to the the rink itself. And it really will be a Norman Rockwell type atmosphere. I I humbly believe I'm very enthusiastic. I don't skate. Gene Goodman, who's been a a proponent of this, he doesn't skate. In fact, well, actually, the last time he was on skates. He cracked his head open and needed stitches. So he and I are not skaters, but we believe this will be a great community. Asset. It will encourage people to come into town and and it'll be open to all. It'll be like, kind of like the pool. In the sense that we'll sell a season pass for, we're talking about five hundred dollars, or you can do a day pass for ten dollars per person. And there are many in the community that are looking to. Sponsor what we call dasher boards. I know, and we're we're seeking this pursuant to five point one C one. And E one as a special permit to to go forward with this. I understand that. Well, Park and Rec unanimously approved having logos on the inside of the dashboard. So you wouldn't see them from the outside unless you were standing right up at the rink. And there are a number of people that are looking to 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 purchase those. Those dasher boards for their ads on the interior of the rink. And we're looking to raise about twenty to thirty thousand dollars with that. Park and Rec are allowing that at Waveney for one year type of temporary to see how it goes. And so that's kind of where we stand now. If you give us the green light, we're hoping to have ever source ready in about three to four weeks. And because there's power right there for the lights. If you look just to the. East of the chiller, there's that electrical panel. Ever Source is going to expand on that a little bit. So that exactly, thank you, Lynn, so that the we can power the chiller. And it's it's really a good location and happy to have Keith or Jake or I answer any questions.
Questions for the team commissioners?
That's John Chris. Has the fire marshal and others involved in public safety examined this plan? And if so, have they opined on it?
So we we we, they have not examined the plan. The tent would be would be purchased from a tank company that has dealt with the fire. Commission and and Fire Chief. So they're they're confident whatever we do is going to be in compliance with whatever they want. And they've done that the company we've talked to has done tents and.
This this company, Jake Granito, sorry, this tent company has done tents at Waveney. So they are aware of what the town likes with egresses, propane tanks for heat, all emergency lighting and exit signs. And, you know, fire safety and life safety stuff for the tent.
This is Dan Radman. The rink is. Demountable. It will come down at the end of the season?
Yeah, so this is, this is a one hundred and twenty six by sixty foot ice rink. It's a mat system, which means when. If you watch like at Yankee Stadium, they rolled the mat out, they've put all the piping together to the chiller, fill it with glycol. And recycle it all at the end of the season. So it's probably a three day install and then a two day to three day takedown as well.
So the rink is temporary. The tent will obviously be temporary.
The tents are temporary. They're not driven into the asphalt. They're with forty five pound weights.
But your chiller plant and your Zamboni shed, that's all going to be permanent structures?
The Zamboni is also a temporary tent.
It is.
Yep. That's we we just, we're going to pave an asphalt section just up to where it would be. On that side of the bathrooms.
Isn't the Zamboni going to need power and water?
Zamboni is gas and the water would we would tap off of our existing water inside of that bathroom. We don't Zamboni as much as another ice rink would do. So if we have a fifty gallon hot water tank, that's enough to suffice on the Samboni.
Okay, I'll leave it to you to how to figure out to get the water there without freezing in a tent. Okay. So Lynn, in terms of the language. As it was written in the agenda as in, as well as the planner's memo, it describes it as a new permanent facility. For recreation and Waveney. So shouldn't we elaborate on that in terms of what's permanent and what's not? The, if you may. So wouldn't it be an annual temporary facility?
I think the only reason that it would be permanent is because of the the pad we're setting. A concrete pad will be set for our chiller. So the chiller will always be there.
Right. I'm just saying we should, we should, I guess, clarify what parts of it are temporary, what parts are permanent. Okay. So the chiller would go away at the end of the season as well?
The, yeah, the chiller we can pull out at the end of the year. That's not an issue, but the pad, the concrete pad will be there.
You you can or you were planning to or? We were hoping to leave it because of cost of moving it every year. That we obviously would plan on screening it.
Right.
And but our hope is to leave it there. Now it can be moved, but the hope is that we wouldn't have to move that. I guess I would request that we be allowed at least to leave it there for the first year if it's a success. So that we don't have to. And then if after two years, the commission says, you know what, we want you to move it. We don't like the screening or we don't like what you're doing, but the hope would be that we would be able to put it on the concrete slab, at least try it out for the first two years. Would there be any kind of fencing or anything necessary around the chiller to prevent? I mean, you're, it's an open ice rink, you know, to prevent the the six year old from running up to the chiller and messing with something?
Yeah, we were going to do cedar fencing or whatever the commission wants us to put in, but bushes, fencing, anything like that is what we plan on doing.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Yes, this is Commissioner Cassavant. I'm not sure who to ask this question of, but in the September meeting, we saw a similar proposal for a private rink. During that particular meeting, there was a long discussion about relative rink size. And it was identified that a traditional rink or a full size hockey rink is two hundred. Would there be any anticipation of changing the size of this rink in a subsequent year depending on usage?
So depending on, that's a very good question. My hope is eventually we would get. It probably wouldn't be in this location, but eventually, three to five to ten years, I would see maybe trying to do a bigger rink. But the short term is just to have this done and see if the town. Accepts it and wants to do it. So I guess it's all up to you all and the and the community as to whether or not they like it. And you know, this, this is kind of a Pee Wee type size rink. There's no hockey anticipated in years one, probably not year two. But maybe if the community wants the, that that could be something we could discuss in the future, but right now, there's, this is just a. To two year type of exploration to see if the community embraces it.
So, Mr. O'Day, what would happen then as you would have to return to the commission for a modification of the permit?
Yes, that that would be the plan. This is a.
This is Claire Tescornia. Will there be any concessions? Like snacks, hot chocolate? And where would that be?
So yes, that that's in the plan. The if we if we could raise enough money, whether it would be a truck to come in. The the tent area, there would be hot chocolate. The idea is to have some sort of hype, some type of hot chocolate and. Food truck or some other type of. Food to be served, but right now we don't look like we're going to have it for the first season, but I don't know if.
I would say that eventually we do open it up to food trucks that have permits in the town or have permits that are accessible. Like a day, I don't know, the town has a daily food permit for food trucks like that, but I think that that would be our. Easiest option with this location is to open it up to vendors that want to come in and. Take a chance during the day or during that, like a Friday night. I think that's what we would do just to cut costs on getting another tent. Or, you know, applying for our own permit on our end.
I'm not sure, Claire, if that answered your question, but yeah, hopefully we'll have a food truck.
Yeah, I mean, I was also thinking you could even approach the guy from the apple cart. Just because it's seasonal and you got to have hot chocolate.
Yes, agreed.
Thanks.
Okay, so if we approve this, we will have a requirement they have to serve hot chocolate.
Just this Commissioner Chris Herring, just had a question on the way you're aligning the different structures. And, you know, you mentioned if it's a bigger rink, you might explore a different location. And so I know in following some of the back and forth in the newspapers, I I saw that there was Kiwanis explored because you had the apple cart facility there and. There was some pushback on that and I I saw some other commentary about using the pool facility where you have the. The bathrooms, the power and the facility there and you have to recreate the parking lots. So it's the concept that. You'd potentially, you know, use this to kind of prove out the viability. And then you're you're limited in your investment here because it seems like you're basically spending money on upgrading the power. And dropping some cement down, but otherwise your your fixed cost of this particular location is rather limited. Is that the way to think of it?
For from the construction aspect, the power ever source is actually doing for free. They want to upgrade the power in the area. Anyway, so there's no charge on that. As far as the concrete and the digging and the trenching, that's all being donated by a private contractor. To get the rink up and running. As far as moving area to, you know, moving the ring to another area, when you move an ice rink. When you go up to an NHL sized ice rink, that's two hundred feet by eighty five feet, your footprint is much larger. So as far as. Up, you know, a place to go, I think we're very limited right now. But you know, you then you're upgrading your chiller, then you're upgrading your Zamboni. There's all these different options and different players. And and if you we if we ever were to go to a bigger ice rink, so I think that right now. Our five year plan would be to stay with something of this size, just to. Prove to everyone in the town that it is a good investment for the town and for the kids and the people. And I think that, you know, in five years from now, we'll have different options to look at. If that answers your question.
Yeah, that 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 does give some good helpful context. In terms of just understanding how the different um, permanent structures are gonna be there, you know, the paving for the Zamboni and the the path for the chiller, one thing that, that concerns me a little is that um, you know, it's a pretty nice expanse there in, in Waveney where you have like a nice open view of the lawn. But you do have that bathroom facility that's, you know, basically there already, so I'm a little concerned about how you have the chiller sort of away from the bathroom and you have the Zamboni away from the bathroom. Is there a way to, to bring those facilities closer to the bathroom so there isn't sort of a, a scope creep?
So, yeah, so we, I, when you say away, they're pretty close, when, and so when you get out there, I know um, you wanna keep the chiller as close to the ice as possible. Um, and so there's actually not, I know that it looks like they're farther apart, but that they're, they actually are pretty close when you're looking specifically, particularly from the parking lot area. Um, and so, um, and you wanna keep the chiller as close to the electric as you can. So I, I think um, um, and you wanna leave enough room around the bathrooms to be able to work. Um, okay. To get it around, so, but I, I, I see your point. I, I think this does a pretty good job of keeping additional structures kind of close to the bathroom, but not too close, but I hear your point, uh, but um.
It, it's, it's definitely a smaller area than this, if you go out there, um, the chiller is probably, I wanna say twelve to fifteen feet off of the building. Um, and we're probably another ten feet, eight feet from our transformer and uh, there's a fence right there. Um, we're probably eight feet away from that fence. Uh, Eversource has rules uh, on how fo- close you can be to the transformer, so I think I would say that we're gonna be right on that cusp of uh, eight to ten feet, I'm not sure what their rule is, but I know it's eight or ten feet away from the transformer. Uh, and from the building, um, I'm not sure if there is a setback off of that structure or not, but uh, we will stay, you know, as close as we can and in line with that, so but that our fencing and our bushes, they don't look out of place. And then as for the asphalt or the transformer pad, if the rink doesn't work out, that's as easy as when the machines are there, we just pick it up and we put grass seed down and you'll never notice that anything was ever there.
Okay, and then from the lighting perspective, you know, I know you have the, the softball lighting behind it, that's pan, pointed in the wrong direction. So these are gonna be lower lights that are?
We're, we're just gonna use uh, the town's soccer lights that they use for the, the, the mobile lights um, that they use for Waveney fireworks.
Oh, sure.
So they're, yeah, those are just easy, it's a diesel gas can that fills them up.
Okay, gotcha, thanks for that.
Welcome, any other commissioners?
Uh, some.
Uh, yeah, this is, this is Bill Williams. What is this going to be still usable parking in the other three seasons that this is not in use, or is that going to go away?
Yes, so the rink right now is in a trailer uh, that we purchased when we purchased the rink, which by the way, we got it a huge discount, so.
Is this the Westport Rink?
This is essentially, no, it's a smaller, but the, the, the person who runs the Westport Rink advised us on where to put all these things, so he helped us uh, in laying it out. Um, so yes, Phil, to Mr. Williams, to, to answer your question, that'll all come up and be put back in the trailer.
Gotcha, thank you.
Yes, John Chris had a couple of questions, the Zamboni building will be a temporary building?
Yes. Be a tent, yep.
The uh, gravel path will be a permanent fixture though.
Eventually the pathway uh, by the tent uh, is what we will pave um, in speaking with Tiger.
And um, the Zamboni area seems to infiltrate a tree there, it's not going to damage the tree at all?
No, we'll stay away from it.
Also, you mentioned um, possibility of um, surrounding the uh, chiller with uh, fence and so forth, that would seem to make it reasonably permanent, particularly if you have to fix a fence. That's meant to be solid. Uh, you mentioned having a fence around it.
Right, I did. Uh, I, I mean, the fencing, we, we would either do a cedar fence that's just, we dig holes, put the, put the posts in and uh, if we needed to rip it out or fix it, that would be on our cost uh, at the end of the day.
Okay, thank you.
Any other commissioners?
Yeah, could I just add one last comment at the end, I think is probably close to um, eight to ten years that Tom O'Day and I have been working on trying to find a place for um, ice skating in town. We've always been conscious throughout the process of both um, park and recreation issues and uh, planning zoning issues. And um, we did need level ground, we did need bathroom facilities, we did need power and we did need parking. And it's pretty hard to get that combination together. And a crucial component is having it far away enough from neighboring residential properties that there is almost no question here that uh, we're as far away as we co- possibly could be from any residential properties and any interest, so we've been thinking about your issues as well as park and recreation issues throughout, we hope you agree with us that we've found the optimum location finally, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Uh, anybody else, Mr. Turner?
Yes, Ken Turner. Um, my question is for uh, Mr. Simpson. Um, the um, screening of all these new structures, uh, could you describe? You know, what, what the intent is, are they gonna be uh, just the tent itself? Are you going to um, have some kind of buffer, especially the uh, chiller? What uh, and, and besides the fence, what, what, what's your thinking on the landscaping?
Well, I think I'd ask them what, um, I don't know the details of the tent or the structure, so maybe you could answer that.
Uh, Mr. Turner, thank you. Uh, the uh, the tents are um, they're gonna be uh, like any other tent that you see from these companies. They'll have a white top and the uh, clear uh, glass uh, coming down the sides. Uh, they'll be enclosed with two hard doors uh, for egress. Um, as far as screening the tents, we don't have a, a plan to screen them, just uh, because those are gonna come down um, at, you know, whenever the rink closes. Uh, as far as the um, the, the pad for the chiller, uh, that's something that I'm open to uh, options uh, on screening it, if cedar, six foot cedar uh, fence panels, uh, maybe some Arborvities or something like that, isn't enough, uh, we're open for options uh, on something that the, you know, the commission would like to see in, in the park.
I, I, I would only ask, so whatever we do, we have to raise the money. Um, and the more we have to raise, then the, the less time we're gonna have on the rink, so uh, but certainly I agree with you, Mr. Turner, we don't want um, uh, uh, you know, uh, uh, an eyesore, uh, to the extent we could um, give us some time to uh, adapt to it and raise the funding, that would be great, because right now we've raised, like I said, about a hundred and ten thousand, we've got to raise another hundred or so. Um, and so whatever, well, whatever costs we uh, need to uh, in- incorporate in the, in our, in our first year. Um, you know, that, 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 it does matter, but, but I, I do appreciate the question.
Okay, and then one final question, um, how high are these tents?
Uh, the tent will be uh, at the peak, I think they'll be uh, right around twenty to twenty-five feet. Um, I ca- I, we have all the specs on the tents, they were sent uh, to the town. Um, so I, I, I'd have to actually double check to get you a, a, an actual answer.
Okay, and then um, as far as illumination um, inside the tents, especially the uh, the one right next to the ice rink. Um, wh- is this going to just uh, be kind of a giant candle at night? What uh, what, what are the hours of um, the ice rink and will, will there be lighting at nighttime?
Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna be uh, within the uh, town noise ordinances, so I think we plan on closing the rink at ten, ten thirty. Uh, similar to the New Canaan Winter Club, uh, and it would just be string lighting inside um, like any other tent. And the lighting will be shut off uh, once the last employee leaves the tent.
Okay, okay, great, thank you very much.
Anybody else? Okay, Lynn, let's open up to the public, uh, anyone in the room? Oh, got two of you over there. Open and see if anybody in Zoom land uh, wants to uh, opine on this place.
Does, does anyone on Zoom tonight want to um, speak on this matter? If you do, could you just raise your icon hand, please?
You good? Super, uh, thank you gentlemen, this uh, this hearing's closed.
Thank you very much.
Welcome. Item number three, continue, Town Mitchell Road upon application to the New Canaan Aquarium and Water Company for special permit approval sections five one E two, construction of a new water supply booster pumping station to replace the existing. Um, having watched um, the replay of last month's hearing, which was well-run, efficiently well-run, much better than I usually do. Um, I understand that we just kept this open uh, for purposes of the change in the scheduling, but is there anything that the applicant has to add to the application? Lynn, we need to, but. Lynn? Lynn, is the town of New Canaan applicant out there? Or?
Yes, we're in the audience, John. The uh, Gary Smart from AECOM is present.
Anything to add, Mr. Man?
Uh, I'll defer to Gary Smart from AECOM who's representing uh, Aquarian.
Okay.
Yes, this is Gary Smart, um, project manager with AECOM. I'm here with Bill Duennell's, uh, Bill is with Aquarian Water Company. Uh, there were a few questions that were asked at the last meeting that we're here to uh, provide additional information. Bill, you wanted to start out in the overall um, aquarium system?
Yeah, uh, sure, thanks Gary. So there was some question about, you know, uh, how the how the water was moved through the Southwest Regional Park Pipeline. And um, I wanted to just open up by saying that, you know, New Canaan is one of the towns that is supplied by the Southwest Regional Pipeline. Um, there is no public water source within the town. The um, the Southwest Regional Pipeline originates at the Hemlock Russ War in Fairfield, Connecticut. And the water then moves from Fairfield into Wilton. In Wilton, there is infrastructure there that uh, continues to move the water through the pipeline. Um, the, the most important pieces um, there are the Wilton Road Pump Station, the Beldon Hill Tanks and then the Beldon Hill Pump Station. Um, and then these uh, these, this part of the infrastructure moves the water into New Canaan. And um, as water moves into New Canaan, it's distributed by the Little Brook Pump Station. And as the Southwest Regional Pipeline moves down uh, through town a little bit, um, that's where it is picked up by the Townage, the existing Townage Hill Pump Station and continues moving the water through the Southwest Regional Pipeline. Um, you know, there was a few, I could think there was some interest and some questions as to, you know, how the how the infrastructure is placed and, you know, why there are pump stations where they are and water tanks and things like that. And um, you know, in general, the location of the pump stations, the tanks, the water mains, you know, have evolved over the life of the system. Um, the infrastructure's been developed as demands increase and interconnections to various systems are made. Um, throughout the life and the existence of the system. The system is generally maintained and improved as required to meet the demands and provide quality public water for all the customers that are served uh, throughout the system and the region. And um, as such, replacements and improvements to the system are made as close as possible to the existing locations. Um, this allows the system to operate as closely as possible to its current configuration, you know. And what that will do is that will help us to be able to maintain the operation of the system, you know, as, as easily as possible. Also minimize the cost to all of our customers throughout the. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Um, there were some other questions that were uh, were posed last month, uh, uh, I'm prepared to uh, to address those. So what you see on the screen right now is a site plan as it was presented last month. Um, there were a few other items that were, that we were asked to address, including the building height. Um, showing a, a rendering of what the structure would look like from the street. Uh, an enhancement of the landscaping plan, discuss prospects for solar power on the roof. And then some specifics on the proposed fe- fencing. So Lynn, if you could go down to the, to the next picture, this is the elevation. Um, so the elevation on the top is actually facing Town Mitchell Road. Uh, there was a question about the height, the height of the building is actually shown in the drawings, these are the drawings that were submitted. Um, the first floor will have a height of fifteen feet, four inches. Um, it is a one-story building, however, the floor is high um, in order to accommodate the mechanical equipment inside. The proposed building height as defined by town regulations will be twenty-one feet and four inches. Um, this building will be constructed in the Waveney Zone. The Waveney Zone allows a thirty-foot height for residential structure and up to fifty feet for a, a public utility structure, which this obviously is. But in either case, we're well under um, the height restriction. Uh, Lynn, if you could go down to the next picture, the next slide, please, thank you. Um, it may be kind of hard to tell, but uh, in this pic, maybe if you can go up slightly. Um, this was taken on, on the, on the curve of Town Mitchell Road by the uh, the highest level of the parking area and the architect went in and selectively removed trees. Um, where the pump station would be constructed. And it is kind of hard to tell, but the pump station has been rendered on this picture. So the lighter color is the uh, face of the building to the south and the, and the shader uh, on the left-hand side is to the west. Um, our architect actually didn't like doing this because the building is not visible, but um, the idea was that the, the building would not be visible. And the town had asked us from the very beginning to maintain the vegetated buffer along Town Mitchell Road. We purposely did not do a curb cut from Town Mitchell Road. So the entire, you know, the fifty-foot buffer will, will remain as long as, as well as anything that is in between the edge of the road and the edge of the property line. We were also asked to uh, enhance the landscaping plan and we have, we have done that. I, I will say that this view right here does not include the um, enhancements to the landscaping plan. So Lynn, if you can go down to the next drawing, please. So we're, we're asked to make sure that the um, that the species were native, we did have one species which was a juniper, which we replaced with a, with an inkberry. And then we also added um, three red maples, three pin oaks and ten red cedars that would go around the east, the south, and then also on the west was in between the parking lot and the building that would further screen the building. With, with regard to prospect, the prospect of solar power on the roof, um, Aquarian has a consultant that they use for, for solar projects. Um, the solar consultant looked at this project, our, the roof slope faces east and west. Obviously, we are um, leaving some trees to the east and then planting some trees to the west. So this is not an ideal site for solar and a- at the present time, we're not looking to include solar in the application. There was also a question about what the fencing was going to look like on this, Lynn, if you can go down. I did uh, include and you're probably gonna have to zoom in there a little bit. Um, we're proposing a, a, a steel ornamental fence. Um, that would, you know, go around the perimeter of the building. Obviously, being a, a public utility structure, we do want to maintain some security and perimeter control. Um, we were asked not to do chain link fence, so this is what we are proposing. Um, definitely more attractive than a chain link fence. So a- at this time, we believe that we have answered the question as presented by the commission at the last meeting and open it up to any other questions that you may have based on the information presented this evening.
Mr. Nurse?
That's John Chris. Um, um, I hear the applicant regarding the possibility of solar, it's always nice that can be done, but given the setting of the building and surrounding trees that would not seem to be optimal here, so I understand their conclusion. Um, regarding the planting, um, it's, if I heard you correctly, it's gonna be an inkberry and a number of native trees, is that correct, sir?
Yes, I mean, the inkberry is replacing the juniper, uh, we had barberry for foundation plantings.
You don't want barberry, no, it's not, not good.
And then um, right, and then outside, you, you know, along the uh, outside of the building, not, not foundation plantings. We're proposing three red maples, three pin oaks and ten red cedars. We're proposing three red maples, three pin oaks and ten red cedars.
Thank you.
This is Dan Radman. Is there any equipment? In the pump station that produces excessive noise that we would need to be concerned about containing?
The the pumps inside the building, you know, have a constant hum. But I have designed many pump stations and this pump station being of concrete block. The pump station, the the pumps will not be heard with the doors are closed. The building does have an emergency generator. And we have acoustical louvers to to dampen the sound from the generator. The generator has a as an intake which faces to the west, which is to the parking lot. And then the the exhaust is to the north, which is to the Merritt Parkway. So we have oriented the building to to shield the noise from 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 the neighbors, which are really to the south. And a little bit further to the east. But like I said, the parking lot and the train station is to the west and the Merritt Parkway is directly to the north.
So the generator is indoors?
The generator is indoors. Obviously, the generator, it's an emergency generator.
This is Chris Herring. What's the access and the impact of parking?
I I mean, the 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 pump station right now is in between the parking lots right now. And when the service, when Aquarian needs to service the vehicles. They essentially pull into the into the parking area. If there's an open spot, they'll use that. If not, they'll double park behind a car that's there. The new layout actually affords them a driveway to be able to go in. As we discussed at the last meeting, there's there's essentially three parking spaces. Which will be, you know, forego to the access to the building. But this is not a building that's inhabited. This is a building that's really only. Operators will come for routine maintenance, which which may be once a week. Typically during the day unless there's an emergency that they need to come at night.
Anybody, excuse me, anybody else? Okay, Lynn, let's let's check for the public on Zoom, please.
Does anyone on the public on Zoom want to speak on this matter? If so, please raise your icon hand.
Great. This hearing is closed. Item number four, Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing for text amendment to the zoning regulations regarding a temporary prohibition of cannabis establishments. I see Mr. Bomonte, Mr. Bomonte, anything to add for the commission this evening?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, just very briefly. So at the last meeting, a local business owner. Had inquired about how the proposed recreational cannabis establishment ban. Might affect his ability to sell CBD products in town. And after looking at this a little bit closer, my short answer is this. It depends on what kind of CBD is being sold. If the CBD is coming from hemp and has very low THC content. The ban would have zero effect. If however, the CBD comes from cannabis or has higher THC content. Then the ban would prohibit the sale of those types of products. And I'll just drill down on that just a little bit more, just to give everyone some context. So as we all know, the the legislation that went into effect back in July. Opens the door for a retail cannabis market in Connecticut. But it also set some limitations. Most importantly, where a ban like the one proposed here. Has been enacted, no cannabis retail can exist, period. And even where a ban has not been enacted. Cannabis retail still can't occur unless that particular business obtains a license from the state. We've talked about all this already. The point I'm trying to make is whether your business. Is subject to these local bans and subject to these new state licensure requirements. All turns on whether the product falls under the legal definition of cannabis. And so, as you can probably guess, some kinds of CBD are considered cannabis and some are not. CBD can be made from two different plants. The one we typically refer to as cannabis with the mind-altering effects. Or alternatively, from hemp. Which I'm sure most of us know at this point is biologically related to cannabis, but under Connecticut. And technically federal law, it's something entirely different. CBD made from cannabis has always been and remains just that cannabis. So in order to sell CBD derived from cannabis. A business would first need to obtain a license from the state. And operate in a municipality that has not enacted a ban like the one that is being proposed tonight. CBD made from hemp, however. As long as it's less than zero point three percent THC. THC is that mind-altering compound. As long as the CBD is made from hemp and it's less than point three percent THC. That is not considered cannabis under Connecticut law. So a business can continue to sell those CBD products without a state license. Regardless of any local ban of cannabis establishments. The flip side, obviously, is that any hemp-derived CBD products that are over the point three percent THC. Are now considered cannabis. And so as of July first, those products and really any products that might have been sitting on someone's shelves. Can't be sold unless that business goes through the licensure process. And again, is in a location that has not enacted one of these bans. Bottom line is that so long as a local CBD business is selling CBD that comes from hemp. And is below the point three percent THC potency threshold. Then they're not going to be subject to any of these new laws. And they will remain unaffected by any local ban that is put in place. Like the one that this commission is considering this evening. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
So James Bash. So my understanding from reading the text, the the last iteration of the text amendment. Was there wasn't a time limit on the prohibition of cannabis establishments in town. So just reading this memo talks about a temporary prohibition. Has something changed about the language that we give a finite amount of time for a prohibition?
Mr. Commissioner Bash, I I think you might be, the memo might just be an earlier version of the memo. I recall some of our early discussions with the commission prior to even presenting a formal text change. One of the things we were considering at least was whether we should have. Made this or proposed this with some sort of sunset provision or if we just leave it as an open-ended permanent, so to speak. Ban. So I I think that's where that temporary language may come from. I mean, Lynn may be able to weigh in on that. But no, what what is in front of you has no timeframe associated with it. If the commission approves it, then it will just be on the books until it's not. Which means until either this commission seeks to change it. Or if. A resident, a developer, an applicant makes an application to change it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, Lynn, let's open up to the public, please.
If anyone from the public wants to speak, please raise your hand, icon hand.
Super. Okay, this application is closed. Thank you, Mr. Bomonte.
Night, everyone.
Good night. Item number five fourteen, Skyview Lane upon application Charles Mills. Mills Engineering Authorization for Paul Corian. Sophie Chang honors for a special permit approval, sections three, four, C six to allow construction of a new tennis court, pool, house and pool. With a hundred and fifty feet of a front yard as property situated in a corner lot, the proposed pool house and tennis court would be approximately fifty-one feet, one hundred and twenty-nine feet. Respectively from the property wanting fronting on Devonport Ridge Road in the two-acre zone at fourteen Skyview Lane. Anything for the applicant dad this evening?
We don't have anything to add at this point, Mr. Chairman. We've we've been over everything. If I could refresh anyone's memory, if they'd like it, it's a special permit on a corner lot. We've had objections from the neighbor associated with the drainage system, which we've gone over with them as well. Folks and, you know, your town engineer weighed in as well, as long as, as well as Mr. Man. I'm happy to discuss it further if anyone has any more questions.
Okay, commissioners, any additional questions on Skyview, please? Okay, it looks like we're good. Lynn, let's open this up to the public, please.
Does anyone in the public on Zoom wish to speak on this matter? And if so, please raise your hand.
Excellent. Okay, so this application is closed. We will now move to the regular meeting. We have two sec eight twenty-four reviews. Watching the meeting last month. Before we climb into these, I do want to just comment that. And all of you commissioners know this, but just just to address this on an eight twenty-four review. What we are determining here is whether or not these are consistent with the plan of conservation and development. So just pointing out, this is not a special permit. We are not necessarily looking for modifications, anything like that. It's just simply to determine whether this is consistent or not consistent with the planet conservation development. So that said, item number six, eight twenty-four review Townman Hill Road upon application to town in New Canaan Aquarian Water Company. For the construction of new water supply booster pumping station to replace the existing. Mr. Man, do you have anything to add?
Nothing further, sir, but I'm happy to answer your questions.
Okay, nice. Commissioners, we have any additional questions? Okay, this application is closed. We can take a vote since this is regular meeting. We can take a vote on this at this point in time. Although, give me a second. Let me think about it. I want to order this. Why don't we do the special permit first? So we'll we'll wait on taking a vote on this. Let's go on to item number seven, eight twenty-four review two twenty Elm Street. Upon application to town in New Canaan for purchase of two twenty Elm Street Building. Mr. Man, is you again?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for hearing us. This, as you may be aware, the town is looking to purchase the building at two twenty Elm Street. It currently owns the land beneath it. This will be a purchase and subsequent sale. The building is looking to be condominiumized. So we'd look to purchase the building and then sell two portions back out to other investors or interested parties. The town will maintain a fifty-four percent share in the building and the other two. Entities will divvy up the rest, the remaining forty-four percent. So as you mentioned in the section eight dash twenty-four municipal improvements, no municipal agency or legislative body shall. And then number two, locate relocate substantially improve acquire land for abandoned cell or lease any airport, park, playground, school or other municipally owned. Property or public building until the proposal to take action has been referred to the commission for report. In looking at the P O C D from twenty fourteen, we put forward that we do. Conform with the P O C D and it is in keeping with the current plan. Section five enhanced livability states that underneath the promote appropriate facilities and services. We're looking to maintain excellence in our education programs and facilities. And since the school system is important to the quality of life of residents in the underlying real estate market, this excellence should be maintained. We this portion of the building, the fifty-four percent that will be owned by the town will house our B O E. Board of Education Administration. And some other portions thereof. And then the other portion is to maintain excellence in our community facilities and services. Community facilities include governmental and other buildings, such as the library, which provides services and functions to all residents. Such such services contribute significantly to community character and quality of life. So again, we feel that this purchase would be in keeping with. The plan of conservation from twenty fourteen for those reasons, and I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
This is Dan Radman. I have a few questions. I heard you say a number of things. You started off with saying that it would be a purchase to then provide a sale where the unit, the building would be condominiumized. Is that correct?
That's correct.
But then you also mentioned that you'd be, we would be housing the board of education in a portion of it?
Correct. Fifty-four, the 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 building will be condominiumized into three sections. So there'll be two areas sold off and one section will be for housing the board of education.
We're not selling off the entire building. We're only selling off two out of the three portions.
Correct. Forty-six percent of this of the square footage of the usable square footage.
Okay, that's different. And why are we doing that for the board of education as opposed to using? We had an extensive buildings survey that the town did with identifying numerous buildings that had vacant space available to them. And we're not using that. Instead, we're purchasing and condominiumizing and relocating the board of ed into a location where. We could easily put them somewhere else into a property which we already own.
Well, we have looked at each parcel that we do own, specifically Irwin and Waviny House. We had the B O E tour both. Facilities. We looked at every other facility that might be available, even co-locating with the police department at one point in time. None of which.
I thought that was the preferred solution. Police station below.
It was not. So the.
Why? Because the board of ed didn't like it?
It didn't fit, sir. It would, at present, it wouldn't fit in the current police department building and then trying to expand the existing format. We don't know exactly where we're going to relocate our police department now. Right now, the B O E is renting at three hundred to four hundred thousand dollars a year. This would be a substantial savings for the town over the life of the of the purchase of the building. Somewhere in the order of approximately five million dollars. The board of selectmen has already approved this purchase, as has the board of finance approved the funding. And we expect the town council to approve the funding tomorrow night at their meeting. So the town bodies, town fathers are very much in favor. And we expect the board of ed to approve at their next meeting the the same.
So the board, the board of ed is currently housed in a facility on Locust Ave, right?
That's correct.
How long of a remaining? Because we recently invested close to a million dollars in renovating that space that we don't own for the board of ed. I believe that was two years ago. How much longer does the board of ed have on the lease of that space on Locust Ave?
We only have one year of where we have to give notice and then we can be removed from the lease itself. Provided that we move into a town-owned building. I'm sorry, but I don't understand why these actually refer to a section eight dash twenty-four review. Where we're just specifically asking whether or not it conforms with the planet conservation development.
I'm specifically asking these questions in terms of trying to find a home for town services. Such as the board of V in currently owned town buildings rather than purchasing new or even leasing.
We are leasing at present and we looked at every single building and couldn't seem to find a fit.
Okay, other questions?
Mr. Man, just on the. On the useful lives of the new building and the the payback you mentioned, you sure referred to a five million dollar payback. So from. From the town's planet conservation, it's about using the town's resources effectively and efficiently. So I just want to make sure I understand. You know, where's that documented in terms of what the the pro forma is for the expected savings? Is that in part of the presentation to the board of finance as to the justification of the expense and why that's?
It was analysis performed by our CFO and a couple of members of the board of finance. They spent a considerable amount of time studying whether or not it would be economically feasible or or. A good investment for the town. And yeah, so over the life of the building. The town sees a substantial savings, not only. Um, the town sees a substantial savings, not only um initially on a cash flow basis, but overall in the in the overall life of the of the building itself.
Okay, so the board of finance has that documentation. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Man.
That was part of their deliberations as to whether or not they should proceed with the purchase.
Mr. Man, this is a commissioner Chris. Um, I I want to be sure I'm understanding what we'd be voting on. Also, it begs the question of what would be? The B of B O E would be doing with the building. Uh, some members of this commission may remember a couple of years back. Um, the board of commission, the board of education came to this commission. Um, some of belatedly frankly, uh, seeking, I believe, was a um special permit to have an alternative high school. In their main office building, which was a different type of use. I'm wondering exactly what the board is planning to do there. Is this going to be a high school? Uh, and an office or just an office or what exactly is going to be going on there? Thank you.
Uh, you're welcome. Um, the they plan to house their administrative offices. And if they choose to put their launch or um other services in there, they'll be coming back for a site review. Similar to the one that they did in August of eighteen um to this body.
So in other words, Mr. Man, it's going to be strictly administrative offices, should that change? And an alternative high school also which to be housed on site. Um, that would be a subsequent application that um the board of education would need to make before this commission for its approval.
Correct. I believe that they are planning to house the additional services there, but they will be coming forward for that site plan reviewed to this board at that time.
Also, when you say a condo building, this be an office condo?
Correct.
Not a residential condo office.
Residential kind of office condominiums high higher. Very uh, a very nice facility. It's an excellent building.
And parking and other uh accessories to the building are adequate for the purpose?
That's correct. The the original um. Site plan or the original use was sixty spaces and that will carry forward. The original contract was for sixty spaces that'll carry forward. Um, to the new uh it to the new partners uh and to the new owners of the building and it'll be uh divided up. Based upon uh usage of square footage.
Thank you, Mr. Man.
Thank you.
This is uh James Bash. Um, so I understand how the proposed site um and the structure attached would be much better. Uh, it's a much better alternative than what we currently have um at thirty-nine Locust Avenue. But I I was hoping, Mr. Man, that you could dig a little bit deeper into why this location would be more consistent. With the P O C than some of the alternatives that were mentioned before that are town owned buildings, including potentially the schools themselves. So why is this location more consistent with the P O C D versus some of those alternatives beyond it's just a better fit?
I don't know if we're looking at more consistency. I think we just need to look at consistency as to whether or not it is consistent. The uh. We have fifty-seven documented buildings or structures in the town. Uh, there was a substantial look back with a building, uh Houston Evaluation Committee. Um, at that time, they looked at several of the buildings that um we had that were either vacant or underutilized. We then looked at what we could utilize in each location. Uh, Waviny House was not a suitable location for the board of that just didn't fit in size or in structure and then trying to fit. Retrofit the building itself to accommodate board of ed, its various offices and and uh conference rooms and what have you. It it just, we would have uh. Done a disservice to the building. Irwin House itself has some uh restrictions, not only placed upon it by this board. But by subsequent lawsuits brought by the uh surrounding neighbors. Which pros uh some problems as well. And uh that building itself wasn't necessarily large enough to house the board of it either. At that point in time, you get into other structures and to try to retrofit those structures to fit wouldn't necessarily work. There was a referendum back in, I don't know, two thousand and two to put a board of ed building somewhere on the wave any property and that failed. Um, there has been a substantial amount of looks at relocating the board of ed, even in other buildings that went went for sale. Um, and this one came forward and it's a, it fits um very nicely. Um, the town already owns the land, so this there's a substantial investment already for substantial savings for the purchase of the building since we already own the land itself. Uh, which then made it even more um inviting or palatable to the board of finance and hopefully to the town council.
And presumably there's no space um to your understanding in the schools themselves.
Correct. I don't believe that there's any space within it. And I I don't know if there's a palette to house a board of bed inside the school system itself. I I don't know what the. What the what the current trends would be or what what the best practices are for the B O E. I've I've never seen a B O E inside a school before.
But but to be clear, I just want to make sure I understand this is for what a couple dozen. Two dozen be board of education administrators or is the amount lesser more than that?
It's more than that to my to my understanding.
Do you know roughly how much?
No, I do not, sir. Sorry.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
But what is the square footage that the B O E will retain in the uh in the new building?
I'd have to look that up. I apologize. I don't have that readily available.
Well, I guess I'm really wondering and and how would that compare with the current rental at uh on Locust Avenue?
Very similar, to be to be honest. It's not much larger or smaller. Um, it's very similar to what they have currently at their existing facility.
If it's similar, do we need square footages?
I I do not. Sorry. I didn't anticipate questions of this nature.
Okay, for the record, uh, first questions were Dick Ward. Uh, second question was Dan Redmond. Um, anybody else? Okay, this series closed. Um, item number eight thirteen South Avenue upon application of South Avenue Property LLC owner and Yaz and Must Mustafa contract Ben. Then D for a site plan approval for retail cigar tobacco shop in the retail A zone at thirteen South Avenue. Who's here to present, please?
Hello? Hi, my name is uh Leif Mustafa. Um, and we're looking to open up a cigar shop. And all all we're adding to the unit is uh shelves and a walk-in humidor. It's a, it's a uh roughly five hundred ninety square feet.
Um. Yeah, sir. Can you uh describe the site plan, the layout, please?
Yes, I have I have my engineer um with me here. If you want to speak indie.
Lynn, do you have someone, the engineer on the line?
Yeah, Andy. Yes, he's on you.
It is. Yes, good evening. Um, it's just a small um retail space.
Sir, I state your name and company, please.
Um, it's Andy Comanelli. I'm the architect.
Okay, please proceed.
Um, it's a small retail space, an existing group of stores. And the existing landlord has done some renovation work there and we're basically just. Moving into the space. We're not even adding a wall. It's just shelving. A counter, um, a humidor, and that's pretty much it.
Okay, questions for the applicant commissioners?
Okay, so it's James Bash. Uh, can you mention the specific type of tobacco products that are going to be sold in the shop?
Um. To like tobacco bags, cigarettes, cigars, tobacco supplies, um, that kind of stuff.
Okay, um, e-cigarettes, anything like that?
Yeah, we're gonna have e-cigarettes. E-cigarettes, vapes.
Vapes.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, we're we're, this is Claire Tiscornia, um, Commissioner. Um, thirteen South Avenue, what existing retail space is that? I can't picture it in my head. What exists there now? Lynn?
Um, there's nothing in there right now. The landlord just renovated the space. The first floor is for retail and there is a um. A residential apartment on the second floor. That's pretty much it.
Is it across from the mobile station?
It it is.
Okay, um, the only the only thing I'd I'd be a little concerned with vapes and e-cigarettes being in that location. It's a very popular. Spot for children who hang out and congregate after school. Um, you you'd have to be very vigilant. You know, and stuff like that. I it's just a little worrisome for me.
Yeah, well, we're gonna ID everybody. We're not gonna sell something with this on the. I wouldn't, and this our system, we cannot sell anything unless we scan ID.
Okay, thank you.
Then um what was that space was formerly?
I think it's the.
It was an interiors place.
The butcher space?
I don't know. I'm just looking here. It's.
It's the, it's the vacant space that's right next to um.
It's in between the barber shop and the bagel shop.
Okay, yeah, which is which used to be the butcher.
Butcher.
Yeah.
Yeah, for, yep.
Okay, thank you. Uh, James Bash, again, are there going to be any flavored tobacco?
I'm sorry?
Any products that are, you know, particularly appealing to uh potentially teenagers that late adolescence, you know, flavored products?
Um, so but um, not necessarily. No, we're not gonna have like any hookah. You mean like hookah products, which is like flavored tobacco? We're not gonna, we don't have.
The things, yes.
Yeah, we're not gonna have them.
Well, we have flavored vapes.
Yes, we'll have flavored vapes.
Thank you.
No problem.
Uh, this is Commissioner Harry here. So from uh, do you have business locations elsewhere and?
Yes, we just um actually recently opened one in New Fairfield.
Okay, and um. From a, from a record perspective, uh, do you have any violations of selling to underage in those other locations?
No, not at all.
From an advertisement perspective, what type of advertisements do you plan on using in the location?
It's gonna be mostly um social media. And through um the internet mostly, cause that's what's like popular now.
Okay, so you won't have any visual advertisements for flavored items in the windows or anything that violates the uh tobacco laws as?
No, 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 everything, everything's gonna be um whatever the code is, the town code is.
Will you have uh cameras in the building?
Yes, yeah, of course.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, uh, Dick Ward, uh, do you contemplate ever trying to sell any cannabis based products?
Like uh what?
Well, you know, cannabis is now under discussion. It's probably gonna be prohibited. As we talked earlier tonight.
Yeah, no, we're not gonna be selling any cannabis products. No. This is gonna be mainly mainly a cigar shop. It's gonna be mainly a cigar shop. Most of the like most of our space. Is uh we have a whole walk-in humidor, which is like almost eighteen feet, which is which takes most of the store. So our like main focus is gonna be on cigars.
Um.
Well, we're gonna have the actual tobacco products as well.
This is Clara Tiscornia again. Um, what were your hours of operation be?
Um, we'll see like, um, we'll see first. We're not hundred percent sure, but most um. It's gonna be probably between ten to ten. But we'll see what time is worth it for us to open up and what time is it um reasonable to close. It's not gonna be be past ten, so.
It's James Bash. What's the name of the retail store you have in New Fairfield?
Oh, Allen A, Allen A Smoke Shop.
I'm spelling that, sir.
I'm sorry?
Do you mind uh spelling? That's all right. I'm sorry.
L L N A, L N A Smoke Shop.
L N A Smoke Shop. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, thank you. This application is closed. Um, item number nine deliberation, any possible action on a closed public hearing item. Let's go back to, let's start at the top. Um, so let's go back to the public hearing items. So item number one, eight Ferris Hill Road. Do I have a motion for approval or denial?
I move to approve.
Appeals for approval, Mr. Redmond?
Think the architect's solution for the integration of the new structure is uh very sympathetic and responsive to the. Antique that's on the property. Um, it's a very um sensitive solution. Um, and respectful of the site uh without minimal impact to the balance of the site. I think it's a really well-done design.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second, Kent Turner.
Okay, Mr. Turner. Okay.
I'm sorry, um, Mr. Goodman, if I could just add, um, the um, I I think another significant point is that the. Existing historical structure will be saved. And um, you know, it's a precious building and um. This uh pretty well seals the fate of of the building and uh never having to worry about it, having, you know, potentially being torn down. So anyway. I'm for it.
Um, Mr. Commissioner, should we maybe add a condition regarding the uh the swell in the driveway? Or do you think that the engineer's explanation was enough?
Do you think, Mr. Redmond?
Um, like you said, the town engineer will probably have to review it as part of the building process, building permit review process. Um, we can look for their way in on it. Um, but it looks like their site plan has already accounted for it with a catch basin and containment gallery dedicated to the driveway area uh to mitigate any of any of the runoff, but.
Fine with me.
Yeah, it would, what what I'll add is, um, I mean, this is why sections like seven, seven are in the in the regulations is to protect. Um, these historically um important structures and as was referenced in. And also, Mr. Red, Mr. Turner have referenced this is this structure has been under threat over the years. Um, so I I think I agree with the commissioners that this is a good solution to uh a good trade-off to preserve the structure. Anybody else?
As John Chris, I I must express my disappointment that there are potential plans to put asphalt shingle on this ancient house. Which frankly rubs me the wrong way. Um, it seems a bit inconsistent with preservation of historic structure. Uh, there was commentary regarding having a wood shingle, which was very traditional in that time. Um, and so I'm I would pose or open the issue of whether um. Asphalt chingo is really appropriate here and whether um requirement of something more um historically consistent would be uh would be a worth considering.
Well, that that brings up a good point. I think the applicant mentioned that the house is on the historic register, right?
Yes.
Um, doesn't that carry with it the requirement to maintain historically appropriate materials for things like that?
We don't know because they haven't had it approved by the Eastman holder. So remember, and I posed the question, they explicitly said, no, we have not received approval. So um I would suggest that any uh approval of this commission be contented upon the uh Eastman holder. Um, approving the site plan as presented to us or as we vote on. But um I I just have to say the. Asphalt shingle on eight and seventeen thirty-five house just does not sit well with me. Um, and if the idea is um to help preserve a very old building, which I think is where this commission is going. And the commission has traditionally supported those types of struck preservation, those structures and then given homeowners a certain amount of wiggle room. Um, you know, asphalt shingle, even the nice stuff is still asphalt shingle. It's not. Wood shingle or slate or some traditional uh on here, this probably. uh, one here, this probably hu- house would probably never have had a slate roof, but, uh, an S, uh, wood shingle is probably entirely likely. Um, that's the point I would make, so, um, I'm not sure what the Eastman holder is going to require, we just do not know. Um, but I was, I would, um, ask Mr. Um, Mr. Redmond whether, uh, he would want to amend his, um, uh, move or move for approval to, uh, require that a, uh, wood shingle roof be placed on this structure.
The, the entire structure, only the historic structure? Cause it's a, it's a, you talking the barn too or just the front?
Comes an issue of consistency too, and the idea is that this would be, uh, you know, a consistent expansion and sympathetic in style.
The carbon footprint of cutting down all those cedar trees and shipping them across the coast seems inconsistent with your interest in native trees.
Uh, trees die and, you know, you, you grow them, cut them down, yeah. Okay, you put a new one up.
Well, from a process perspective, so now I have to put on my lawyer hat. Um, since we've closed the application, we have to keep it to who's seated, so this is sort of an easy way of shutting down this, this part of the.
Time, yeah.
But my apologies, Mr. Harry. Uh, you know, look, my concern would be, um, we did not raise this with the applicant in the public hearing. And, um, you guys are smarter on this than I am, but if it re, if it, if it entails a higher cost, the applicant, we did not raise it in the public hearing, I'd be a little reticent about requiring it at this point in time, even if intellectually or historically.
I, I, I do agree with Mr. Chris, but I do agree with you as well. I think it's problematic to raise it at this point. Um, but the applicant was amenable to having a condition in there of having the Eastman holder have approval over it.
Agreed.
Um, which that might be a condition that might come up. Um, but the other point is, uh, 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 being on the register, there are certain federal guidelines that have to be followed, state and federal guidelines. And the materiality of that, of the roof might be one of them.
Yeah.
Um, so we could just put it in there that they would have to comply with all federal registered guidelines for a listed house.
So you're suggesting that?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Turner, are you seconded this? Are you comfortable with that modification?
I, I am, yes, I am.
Additional discussion of the motion? Okay, I'm gonna call the question. Um, John Goodman, I vote yes. John Chris?
Yes.
Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
Dan Redmond?
Yes.
Clara Tiscornia?
Yes.
Ken Turner?
Yes.
Dick Ward?
Yes.
Bill Williams?
Yes.
Arthur Cassavan?
Yes.
Okay, um, the application is approved with conditions. Um, item number two, six seventy-seven South Avenue. Do I have a motion for approval or denial? I don't miss this, Pearl.
It's John Chris, I move we approve.
Reasons for approval, Mr. Chris?
Um, I think that a ice rink would be, uh, very positive, um, public accessory, providing, um, uh, healthy exercise and socialization opportunities to all members of the community, uh, which would be, uh, enhancement of the quality of life of our town. I think the, um, effects on the, on the site are fairly minimal. There's already a parking lot there, so they're essentially putting something on top of an impervious surface. Uh, it will be temporary. Uh, the, uh, more permanent, um, installations is really of the, um, uh, of the chiller, uh, small pad, which could be ripped out if necessary. But even if left is a fairly minor imposition on the site. Um, I would suggest that a, uh, as part of the approval, that there would be, uh, a, um, call it an eight-foot cedar safety fence around the chiller for public safety reasons. Um, uh, that would need to be there. Uh, and other than that, I would accept the application as presented.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
I heard Mr. Tiscornia. Uh, why are you laughing?
Cause we all said.
Wants to second it.
Okay, further discussion of the motion. I, I do have a question, um, for, for Mr. Chris. Um, and I don't feel strongly about this. Um, but the applicant did offer this, should we review this, say, one year out? Or, or not? And then the other thing you can also say is let's remember that this also comes under, it comes under our jurisdiction for the special permit, it also comes under the jurisdiction of parking wreck.
Right.
And I always like to defer to, you know, the right governing body for the right activity, so we could say, look, we'll leave that up to parking wreck as long as it meets our special permit conditions. And I thought I'd just throw out the question to you.
And I understand, um, my, my sense from a planning zoning perspective that the, um, imposition on the landscape is pretty minor in the grand scheme of things. Um, two temporary buildings and a temporary rink on, uh, on a parking lot, so, you know, the, the damage is done. Um, in the small chiller, uh, can be easily ripped out if this doesn't fly, uh, with the community, so I, I don't see any, uh, if, if they go ahead with it and it doesn't work out, uh, reversing it is not gonna leave a hole. Uh, and the rest of it, I, I would really see much more of a park and rec issue on what they think is, um, an appropriate thing for one of their parks.
Okay, duly noted. Uh, thank you, Mr. President, and what I will add is, is I will emphasize some of the points that you just made. I, I think the location's a great location.
Yeah.
Um, for, you know, I'm sure everybody knows where that location is. It's, it's not obtrusive to really anything and remembering the soft door field is there and, you know, even if you worry about lights, well, we already have light impacts, they're bringing over the lights, I think, from the soccer fields, the lacrosse fields, whichever, they're already used, so it's really much of what they're bringing in is really an in-place activity, so to speak, you know, except for the ice rink. Um, so I'm, I'm very encouraged by that. Any other commissioners? Okay, I'll call the question. Um, John Goodman, I vote yes. John Chris?
Yes.
Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
Dan Redmond?
Yes.
Clara Tiscornia?
Yes.
Ken Turner?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Bill Williams?
Yes.
Arthur Cassavan?
Yes.
Okay, great, motion carries. Um, okay, Talmadge Hill. Um, you do one or two ways, but I think I'll start with the eight twenty-four review. So do I have a motion, um, that the eight twenty-four for Talmadge Hill is consistent or not consistent with the planet conservation development?
This, John Chris, I move that it is consistent with the planet conservation development. Water is life. This is water, uh, not only for the member, for residents of some of the town of New Canaan, but also for neighboring communities. Um, vital for public safety and health. Uh, it's an essential cog in a regional, uh, water supply system. Um, and, uh, not having reliable, as one of the people with a well and the problems of unreliable water. Uh, and so having a reliable water system such as, um, will be, um, enhanced here would seem to be very squarely within the, uh, planet conservation development as a, uh, public amenity and a public utility.
Right, okay, thank you, do I have a second?
Well, second.
Okay, that was Mr. Ward, right?
Yes.
Okay, great, okay, further discussion of the motion?
I mean, I think it's important to just simply note, uh, which is already in the record, that it's replacing the existing pumps, so it's not a completely new type of facility. It's a, a continuation and an upgrading and improvement of existing pumps.
Okay, great, okay, so I call the question that, um, the eight twenty-four is consistent with the planet conservation development for Talmadge Hill Road, I vote yes. John Chris?
Yes.
Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
Dan Redmond?
Yes.
Clara Tiscornia?
Yes.
Ken Turner?
Yes.
Dick Ward?
Yes.
Bill Williams?
Yes.
Arthur Cassavan?
Yes.
Okay, so now determining that this is consistent with planet consumi- conservation development, let's move on to the special per- permit. So to have a motion for approval or denial of the special permit for Talmadge Hill Road.
This is John Chris, I move we approve. Uh, I think the, uh, design of the building is, is very consistent with uh, the design of traditional buildings, uh, and particularly agricultural structures in, in our town. Uh, building materials seem to be of, of good quality. I like the idea of some of the design elements such as cupola on the top. It is going to be well-hidden from the pictures, uh, in the woods and be surrounded by some, uh, new screening of, of native plants. Um, there was a loss of a couple parking spaces, I, I, those are, we look, having commuted out of Talmadge Hill for many years, I can say, almost no one ever parks there unless you're really stuck. And no, I don't think this would be that much of an imposition on commuters or the town to lose these spaces. Um, and, uh, it seemed to be a very well-designed building and, uh, well-hidden and also insulated.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chris, do I have a second?
Also a second as well.
Okay, Mr. Ward, okay, any other further discussion of the motion?
And I'll, I'll note that, uh, Aquarian, I think, has made an effort to, uh, recognize the neighbors, uh, particularly with respect to sound abatement and, uh, the location of the exhaust, uh, going away from the, uh, residents that are across the road. So I think they've been the, the fencing, they've, uh, taken into account that, uh, no chain link, which would be not very attractive. And they've come up with, I think it's, uh, a, an appropriate fence because since it's not an occupied building, uh, security is important, uh, to discourage people from attempting to go into it. So I think they've done a good job.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, I call the question, John Goodman, I vote yes. John Chris?
Yes.
Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
Dan Redmond?
Yes.
Clara Tiscornia?
Yes.
Ken Turner?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Bill Williams?
Yes.
Arthur Cassavan?
Yes.
Okay, great, carries unanimously. Item number four, this regulation amendment, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission, Public Hearing Protects Amendment to the zoning regulations regarding a prohibition of cannabis establishments, says temporary here, but temp- but cannabis establishments, as we moved on with that. Do I have a motion to, um, to, uh, change the regulations?
Chairman's John Chris, I, uh, move we move forward with the text amendment to, um, prohibit cannabis establishments in the town of New Canaan.
Okay, and Mr. Chris, as you know, um, when we do a regulation amendment, if you can. Second area lost my place on the page perspective. Consistency with, uh, planet conservation, uh, in development and consistency with the totality of the regulations.
As far as consistency, what's, uh, with the second one, regulations, there already is a regulation on the books regarding, uh, medical marijuana, so this would be consistent with that, it's simply an expansion uh, of the concept to include, um, all marijuana, uh, sales, not just for medical purposes. One might say that, uh, medical is even more imperative for health and so for banning that, certainly recreational would be sort of an easy layup in my view. Uh, as far as conservation development, um, you know, I've made the point in, on the record before that, um, particularly with, uh, uh, potential marijuana sales, uh, the one cannot regulate the use. If it could be purchased outside of our town, but the, the issues of potential, um, uh, of use in the streets, uh, especially when smoked and could have a, uh, contact high, which I've seen in other municipalities, you walk by. And, uh, this would seem to be, to me, to be a potential, uh, challenge to public, uh, health and safety. And so I would suggest that, um, a continuation and expansion of the ban on sale of cannabis products be consistent with, uh, health and safety issues in our plan of conservation development.
Okay, great, thank you, and Lynn, do we have a recommendation for an effective date?
Um, yes. Staff would recommend December seventeenth, which is a Friday, or December twentieth, which is a Monday. And then the other note we would just make is, um, I believe you guys wanted a permanent ban, um, temporary should just be removed.
Correct.
So.
Yes, yes, that would be my, my motion would be, uh, permanent.
Okay, Mr. Chris, do you like Friday or Monday? The seventeenth of December or the twentieth of December?
I say Friday, you get the weekend in there.
Okay, so, do I have a second of the motion?
Second.
Okay, great, uh, further discussion of the motion.
Uh, may I ask a question, please? This is Cassavan. Um, i- is it currently written, um, that there would be a time limit on this? I, I, I find the notion of a permanent ban inconsistent with policy. Um, that would require reasonable reconsideration of things after a point in time, and I, I find it particularly important in consideration of the later matter we had on the agenda where we might potentially approve a shop selling, um, a variety of arguably more harmful products. And, and so my question is primarily about the notion of permanency here as opposed to requiring, uh, some sort of a temporary, uh, ban.
So, so Mr. Cassavan, um, and Mr. Bob Monte spoke to this, is we can always change our regulations, so no regulation is permanent.
Hence my logic for, we could always make it permanent later, I think that the ability to change something once enacted is quite limited. So, um, I, I was actually asking a clarifying question, which will probably now come out in my vote, but um, I, I think that permanency here is a poor policy.
Um, well, I'm confused. The regu- regulations are not permanent, they do not have to be permanent.
E- except by literally removing a timeframe here, we have, in, you know, in the, in the absence of other information, made it permanent.
In, in the, this is Clara Tiscornia, in the past, the way we've approached, um, cannabis-type establishments, and I think it was even marijuana in the past where, um, we would say after a year, we'll, we'll revisit it. Would you be more comfortable with that, Mr. Cassavan?
Uh, I, I actually don't even need a year, I would be much more comfortable with a revisit requirement or a three-year ban or something like that. I, I think that for any number of reasons, I, I, even amongst the electorate, who might have a different view about the, this particular policy relative to law in the state, that we might find ourselves disadvantaged later. I may be the only person with that view on this particular planning council, but I, I would just raise that issue as we consider the motion at hand.
But, but if, if, if this becomes effective on December seventeenth, let's say, on December twenty-first, the commission, I'm making up that date, the commission or, as Mr. Bob Monte mentioned, any other absent, outside applicant could make an application to change the regulations.
Mm-hmm.
So no regulations are permanent in, in practice.
Uh, I, I understand that, I mean, but, but in the motion to approve this, there was a specific reference to making this a permanent ban.
Well, it, it's, it becomes a permanent ban because we're inserting it into the regulations.
No, I don't think we're gonna use.
Not going to. Yeah, thank you, it's not going to say permanent, it's just going to be a regulation.
Thank you.
I would note that everything in our regulations are permanent until we change them.
Right, I think, I think what caused the confusion is, I'm not placing confusion on anybody, quite frankly, a couple of hearings ago, we, we got caught up with this whole temporary versus permanent thing.
Yes.
And then when Lynn just said, it's not temporary, I, I could see Art's point, okay, well, therefore it's permanent, but by definition, nothing's permanent. So it's not, the word permanent is not going to be in the regulations.
Right, thank you.
The ban we have now on medical marijuana, it has no sunset date on it, so it is there until we choose to remove. there until we choose to remove it, which is what we're discussing this evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else? Okay, call the question. John Goodwin, I vote yes. John Chris?
Yes.
Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
Dan Radman?
Yes.
Claire Tascornia?
Yes.
Ben Turner?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Bill Williams?
Yes.
Arthur Cassavant?
Yes.
Okay, good. Fourteen Skyview Lane, do I have a motion for approval or denial?
Claire Tascornia, I'll move for approval.
Okay, reasons for approval, Ms. Tascornia.
Seems that the, the architect has done a very good job in presenting his case. I think he addressed the neighbors' concerns. He's done above and beyond what they asked him to do when it regarding drainage. Even the, the town regulations and the town engineers that he has gone above and beyond. And I think he has spoken to the neighbors and I think they came to an agreement. And I don't think that the improvement to Skyview Lane will adversely impact the neighbor's property. So therefore I move for approval.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
It's John Chris, I'll second.
Okay, further discussion of the motion?
This is Krista Nielsen. I'll just add that, you know, this was, this is for a tennis court pool house and pool within a hundred and fifty feet of a front yard and the applicant presented, you know, that this will be well screened. So I think that's, you know, another positive for this project. Not only will it not affect the drainage of the neighboring property, I don't think it'll be visible by the neighbors at all.
Anybody else? Second, so to speak, the fact that the applicant was responsive to the concerns raised by the neighbor. Second, the town engineer did put in a significant amount of time into reviewing this application as well. And, and third, remembering that it's, it's simply their job not to increase runoff off of their property, which I think they, they've convinced the appropriate experts. So I'll call the question. I vote yes. John Chris?
Yes.
Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
Dan Radman?
Yes.
Claire Tascornia?
Yes.
Ken Turner?
Yes.
Dick Ward?
Yes.
Bill Williams?
Yes.
Arthur Cassavant?
Yes.
Right, that carries. Okay, item number seven, eight twenty-four, review two twenty Elm Street. Do I have a motion that this is consistent or not consistent with the planet conservation development?
Is John Chris, I move we state that the proposed acquisition of two twenty Elm by the town is consistent with a twenty-four. Reasons, reasons thereof. You know, the, the health and welfare of children in town are particularly important for residents of the town and important for in the planet conservation development. School administration is part and parcel of public education. This would seem to be a good site for the Board of Education's offices so they can perform their function in a professional manner. It's been represented that this would provide a cost savings in long term to the town, which would be either used for reducing the mill rate or spending the money better elsewhere, which would seem to be again, consistent with the planet conservation development. So I believe this is wholeheartedly within the consistent with the planet conservation development.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second, Kent Turner?
Okay, any further discussion of the motion?
I would just make one point is that if the school administration intends to use part of its facility as the alternative high schools, it did in its current position, it would need to come to this commission ahead of time. I believe for a special permit and they may want to be sure they're aware of that.
Okay.
Which they said they may do, but may not, so.
But that's not a condition.
It is not a condition, but simply that's something maybe coming down the road.
Okay, further discussion of the motion?
I just have to voice my opinion on this. I think it's disappointing that we need to go down this road when we have the available real estate in town and other buildings, specifically the police department, which has been discussed for years. I understand Mr. Mann's explanation of not enough space, but we're about approximately thirty-five people at the Board of Ed to answer your question from earlier, James, of where to house them. And I know that there's a difference between finding available space for thirty-five people or thirty-eight people, whatever the number is, and what that group wants in terms of space. Wants and needs are two different things. I've always believed that the police department solution, especially in the current days where the first selectmen in the town have been discussing of what to do with the police department, possible new location on South Avenue, the costs involved, et cetera. I'm still a firm believer that the existing police department could be renovated to suit not only the needs of the police department as a whole, but also the Board of Ed as a whole, co- locate the two of them in an existing structure in town and satisfy the, the the requirements and the guidelines of the plan and conservation and development to a more fuller extent than just purchasing a property to get them out of a lease.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, I call a question and, and the vote, a yes is consistent. I vote yes. John Chris?
Yes.
Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
Dan Radman?
No.
Claire Tascornia?
Yes.
Ken Turner?
Yes.
Dick Ward?
Yes.
Bill Williams?
Yes.
Arthur Cassavant?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Thirteen South Avenue, do I have a motion for approval or denial?
I move we deny this project, this application.
Go ahead, please.
I'm sorry. I, I don't think it's appropriate to have a smoke shop in an area where schoolchildren gather, especially if they're going to be open from ten in the morning until ten in the evening. The fact that they're going to be advertising so basically on social media is, I think, targeting young teens and teenagers. It just makes me uncomfortable. I don't think it's an appropriate use for that spot. So I move denial.
I have a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, further discussion of the motion?
I'll add, this is Krista Nielsen. I'll add that, you know, part of our site plan, application approval decision criteria are the preservation or enhancement of the character of the neighborhood. And to echo Claire's point, I think this particular location in town is, is problematic because it is a place where schoolchildren gather. So I, I don't think that it would enhance that neighborhood in particular.
Just playing devil's advocate, this is Dan Radman. How does it make it different? How is this different than what Mackenzie's used to sell? Because Mackenzie's was a tobacco shop. They sold cigars. They sold candy. They sold stationery and it was where all the kids hung out, but yet they weren't walking around with a cigar in their mouth.
Mackenzie's never sold cigarettes.
Yes.
You could also say that, I mean, we already have two establishments across the street that are already selling these things. We don't need another one.
Yeah.
You know, Mobile sells it, seventy-six sells it. I don't think we need three tobacco shops within one block where we know that young children congregate.
Well, our, our target is mainly cigars. It's mainly going to be a cigar.
And Lynn?
Most of the shop is a cigar.
Sir, sir, this is a closed.
You can't speak.
Lynn mute him.
I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay.
And every, Lynn, public should be muted, please.
This is John Chris. I would also note that CVS sells tobacco products, as does Walgreens. The two gas stations sell tobacco products.
Understood, but
you know, the toothpaste is a bit out of the tube on this one.
It just seems a little arbitrary in my view to because they happen to be selling tobacco products and, and the applicant did state their focus is cigars. That we'd be denying this application based on that, whereas other establishments in town already sell similar products, but we don't have a concern with those. And it comes down to a, a matter of policing those, or those establishments policing themselves and enforcing the law, carding kids and not selling to minors. So again, I'm just playing devil's advocate because the same argument can be made for a liquor establishment or a CBD or a cannabis establishment or whatever it might be. I just don't want us to deny an application arbitrarily.
I mean, an interesting question would be, what if they were only selling cigars? The, the other thing that does concern me is site plan applications, we generally as a commission have less latitude than we do on a special permit. So you know, one idea could be, I mean, look, somebody, we, we can vote, see where the vote comes out. The other thing we can do is potentially consult with council. Delay the vote because my concern is that we may be going too far afield in our reasons for denial, given that this is a site plan application. So what, what, I mean, Mr. Tascornia, you've made the motion, so you have the right to proceed with a vote.
So you're asking whether we vote now or talk to council and see?
Get a little input from council.
I mean, I don't think it's ever a bad idea to talk to council.
You guys agree?
Agreed.
Okay, okay, so Lynn, you and I will speak to council. Then we'll, we'll reconsider this at our December meeting. Okay. Item ten, planning subcommittee update. Ms. Nielsen, do you have anything for us?
Nope, I have nothing.
Okay. Item number eleven, A Grace Farms Foundation, three sixty-five Luke's Wood Road, two thousand twenty-two, winter, spring sports and recreation activities schedule. You've heard my view on myself recusing on this before, but I will continue to recuse myself. So I'm handing the chair over to Ms. Nielsen.
Okay, so the schedule is up on the website for anyone who wants to see it. Lynn, I would assume this is consistent with what we've received in the past for sports for Grace Farms? Yes, it is. And it's typical of other organizations in town institutional uses like the country school or other similar uses that have come to us for sports scheduling.
But I may make a comment. Dick Ward? I'm a little uneasy about having the commission approve sort of a full schedule for was it five months, six months worth of activities every, every we have in the past approved a special permit that imposes appropriate restrictions. And if their activities are within the special permit, I'm not sure I understand why we should be as a commission approving the specific schedules, but leave it up to the to Lynn to sort of supervise that what they are proposing to do is within the limits of the special permit.
I think this is Dan Radman. I think the reason we're reviewing it annually is it was one of the one hundred conditions of approval back when we, when we approved Grace Farms, that they would come back to us every year with a proposed schedule because we were trying to keep guardrails on the level of activity at the, at the complex. And this was sort of a annual checkpoint to understand how much activity would be happening during the first five months of each year.
But we don't really know how much activity these activities would, would generate. And could we be surprised that suddenly one of these or more of these would entail allowing more than the approved max intensity? And then they say, hey, you, you approved our schedule, so just because it exceeds some total number of person use. But I don't know. I'm not sure that we really.
I don't, I don't think, I don't think approving a schedule like this relieves them of the responsibility of still complying with the balance of the regulations and the special permit approvals.
I would agree with Commissioner Radman is that the Grace Farms still has limits regardless of the type of activity regarding number of people on site and so forth. And these would fall under those, those limits also. So if, you know, too many people show up one day for basketball, some people will be denied entry at the gate.
Lynn?
And just as a reminder, in the activity, activity chart in condition sixteen, you started requiring that once they hit two hundred people, that's when they start to, that's when you started to regulate the number of events they could have. And below that number, it was unlimited.
So there is a, there is a tripwire regarding headcount.
Yes, and just
Already in place.
Just as a note, the Grace Farms was actually closed due to COVID until very recently. So there may or may not be an abundance of people there, or it just may be a trickle.
Okay, so do we actually need to take a vote on this, Lynn?
Yes, we do.
Have we been approving this kind of scheduling in the past?
I believe we have.
Every, every year.
Okay, so do I just call a roll call or, okay? I don't have a list, so I'm just gonna. Mr. Chris?
I vote for approval.
Need a motion.
Oh, I need to, I do need a motion. I don't just take a roll call. Okay, do I have a motion for approval?
I move approves John Chris.
Okay, and do I have a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, and now I will attempt to do a roll call.
Did you seat anyone incremental?
Oh, I do need to seat someone for Mr. Goodwin. So since you're sitting to my right, I will seat you, Mr. Herring. Okay, Mr. Chris?
I approve.
And Mr. Radman?
Yes.
And Mr. Herring?
Uh, yes.
And Mr. Cassavant?
Yes.
And Miss Tascornia? Yes. Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
And Ms. Nielsen, yes.
Ms. Nielsen? I did want to bring up a, a different question for the commission. And first, before I say this, if anyone is ever not comfortable appearing here in person, then of course this would not apply. But one of the things I find is particularly with the applicants, I mean, it'd be great to have as many commissioners here in person as well. I, I just think it makes for a better meeting. That's a bias that I have and that we've, we've all gone through COVID and I have this bias in my day job as well. But observing tonight, I, I think when an applicant is on Zoom, it's harder for me to evaluate the application. And ideally, I would like to be able to look at the applicant. I think it would be easier to look at the materials. Now, I know some of you are looking at the materials online, which is a good thing. But, and, and I guess in hybrid meeting schedules, Lynn? Meeting schedules, Lynn, we can't require an applicant to be here alive. But I think we could encourage that, and I just wanted to ask you, a few commissioners, if you think that's a good idea.
But, this James Bash, I, I think from the applicant's perspective. If the, you know, again, using the pre-rack that they feel comfortable with. From a public health standpoint. They're going to be put in better stead from having kind of that face-to-face communication, there's something that's impersonal about Zoom. That you just kind of, you can't make the same. At times, human connection. In the type of, you know, way we're communicating, so I, I actually think it's, I'm thinking about it not only from the perspective of commissioners, but really. From the perspective of applicants, I think it actually behooves them to, to be here.
Okay, so does everybody agree that we'll ask Lynn to. Encourage applicants to present to us live, of course. Even if it's a hybrid event, there will be no detriment if they choose to present, prevent, present via Zoom, but. Everybody does that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I think it's an issue of equity and fairness too, is that, you know, you worry that is someone who is physically here gonna get a better or worse deal than someone who zooms in? Uh, that was something I would certainly want to avoid. That, you know, uh, can it be as equal as possible, you certainly try to, and I realize that. You know, let's say someone is, you know, physically incapacitated and cannot physically show up here, okay, I, I get that, it's sort of like. Having um an absentee ballot, you know, you're, you're physically can't get to the polls, you need to vote by absentee, okay, I, I accept that. But I, I, I always worry that if a, whether it's an applicant. An applicant's counsel or experts or a member of the commission, you know, is it different whether you're. Physically here or virtually here. That is a concern to mine.
Would you say that, I think it's a fair point, but it, I don't think of it as a zero-sum game, so to the extent that anyone kind of wants to partake. Wants to take. The opportunity to be here, they certainly can, and I think it doesn't hinder or may would hurt those who chose not to be here, and so.
There's also a cost issue, I think about some of the. Experts, you know, who are brought in, you know, professional engineers and water experts who live, you know, two states away or something. And, you know, they end up, you know, the, 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 the meeting ends at eleven o'clock and they get to drive home for two and a half hours, and that's kind of tough. And so, you know, it becomes. You know, is it really necessary to physically show up, or is it kind of nice that they show up? Uh, and the imposition on them and others who have to. Have long commutes, you know, mine's six minutes away, but for others, it's a lot longer, particularly for people who are, don't live in town. Uh, and that is also on my mind as well.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, I can just think of some of the people zoomed in tonight and specifically the last one, and I just wonder if the last one had been here live, you know. Is, is one person we couldn't. One person we couldn't see at all. And the other person, we saw his hair. And maybe if there had been a conversation, maybe we could have made more progress. But, okay. Thank you, approval the minute.
Mister Chairman, I have one other item on administrative.
Oh, I'm sorry, right, yeah, go ahead.
Administrative items, so staff received a PowerPoint presentation from the New Canaan Preservation Alliance recently. With respect to the preservation of the nineteen thirteen building, and while the special permit is closed. There are actually some conditions with respect to the special permit that are open because this commission asked the. Library to come back with their preservation options, so the question I have is would this commission like to see the PowerPoint now? Would they prefer to wait until the library submits their stuff, which. Or if you don't want to see it at all, I won't disseminate it to you. The library, you guys approved it and asked that they submit within a hundred and twenty days after the effective date of approval, the effective date was August thirtieth. That would bring the date to December twenty-eighth, which means they should be submitting for the December fourteenth. Meeting, though they haven't actually said that publicly yet.
But, but Lynn, your question for the commission is would the commissioners like to view? A copy of the new Canaan Preservation Alliance's. Latest presentation on potential alternatives and how they see alternatives for the library, is that correct?
Yes, that is the question.
My view is why not?
I think sooner the better.
Let's be clear, now, yeah, let's be clear what we're talking about, so. What, what happened here is, so we, the library is going to come to us in our December meeting.
Right, and they're the applicant.
They're the applicant. So they're fulfilling a, a condition of our approval. So that's a done deal, that's happening at our December meeting, okay, in the meantime. The New Canaan Preservation Alliance delivered a presentation to all of the town bodies. Except ours. And we, we. We agreed not to deliver it to the commissioners because we were concerned. That technically, you can, you can make the argument that we closed the application because we voted on it. But you can also make the argument that we have an open application because the library still needs to come back to us. So. Lynn consulted with council. And the feedback Lynn received is that. If the commissioners would like to see this preservation of this, this presentation from the New Canaan Preservation Alliance. Then if the commissioners, if we say to Lynn, we would like to see it, Lynn will deliver it to us. My opinion, I'm only one of twelve, is why not? But, that's the question for everybody.
Well, would it be fair to allow the library to also comment on that presentation?
They, um, I'm sure they will comment upon, well, I shouldn't say that, but they will have the opportunity to comment on it at the December meeting.
I guess, I, I guess I would raise commissioner that, like, what agency does the, does the historical commission have in this? Like, they have no party to the discussion of this.
Preservation Alliance?
Correct. They're not the approver, so.
Yeah, well, actually, technically, we're in litigation.
Right, so I guess, I, I guess why would we want to complicate matters if they're suing us and we're waiting on the applicant to return us?
Well, my view is the more, my opinion is, and again, just one commissioner, my opinion is more information, the better. And by the way, it's been delivered to every other town body anyway.
But it's like more manipulation, the better, right, so why are we allowing an outside party to manipulate our decision as to what the applicant comes back to? I think it's unfair to the applicant to basically.
I mean, I.
I, it's Ken, it's Ken Turner, I, I think we have every right to see what they've done, they've put a lot of time and effort into it. Just out of due respect, uh, there's no harm in, in seeing the plans and, and getting their point of view.
Agreed.
And, and I would absolutely like to read it because I can make a decision as to whether or not it has useful input, we spent forty hours hearing all of these matters and. To think that the body that actually votes on it hasn't read a piece of information from a party with thoughtful perspectives is crazy.
I was only forty hours.
That was in the first week.
Sorry, I couldn't resist, anybody else?
Well, perhaps we should be sure that uh the library does receive a copy at the same time that it's distributed to the commission.
Agreed.
I'll make sure to send it to them as well. If, if the commission wants to distribute it.
Okay. Before we turn, I, I just wanted to follow up on one thing from the last meeting, we said we were, it was kind of, kind of a continuing thing that you were going to check up on Lynn, which was the. The, the discussion on whether any use of the ARPA funds could potentially go to the Affordable Housing Fund. Or is that a non-starter, and any information you've gleaned from that?
Um, I, I don't have a full answer on that, sorry.
Okay. Exactly, the only reason I bring it up now is because I think, and I could be wrong in the timing, I believe some of the other boards are going to vote on. At least the initial allocations of the ARPA funds and this coming with, but I could be wrong, so it, it might just be something where. The timing is, is not going to work this time around.
Speaking of, I saw the Parking Commission submitted some recommendations.
Yeah, well, just. Let me finish on the art, but. So my understanding, I said this before, is that Westport P and Z, I think, did apply for ARPA funds, now I also understand. That somebody made the argument that affordable housing, for some reason, doesn't qualify for ARPA. Seems weird.
Yeah.
So, I mean. My view would be if the commissioners feel that. You know, if, if, if the commissioners agree with James. That we should be exploring ARPA for affordable housing, then, you know, Lynn, you can address it, but I mean, how does everybody else feel? I, I sort of think, you know, the last point you made, it could be too late anyway.
Yeah, I think it could very well be too late, I, I don't think, I don't know enough about what restrictions there are in terms of the ARPA funds. But just from the list of, of kind of selected targets for the use of those funds, it seems like it's a pretty broad. Set in terms of, you know, there's no specific mandate that it has to be that's other than. That I, I think they're not intending to use the ARPA funds for ongoing operating expenses within the, within the budget.
How do they arrest, sorry, James?
No, I was just gonna say, like, you know, whether it's, I think, things like a. A behavioral program at Silver Hill, two hundred fifty thousand dollars, money allocated to Fairfield. Community Foundation. You know, it, I think there was, the paper wrote something about a million dollars potentially to the preservation. Of some, you know, some component of the library application. So I think there's a kind of varied usage that it seems like uh one could, when you start for funds for. So that, I think it is likely that you could use those funds for. Um, an affordable housing fund purpose, but again, I, it might be just more a question of the timing is not working right now, it is what it is.
Okay. Then why don't you check on the timing within Town Hall? And then. I mean, but, but before we do that, actually, how the rest of the commissioners. Maybe that we should have a consensus that we should explore this to have Lynn go ahead and do it.
It's worth asking a question.
Everybody good?
Good idea, because I think, I mean, if we're in theory the author of the. Long-range plan of conservation, you would think that the ARPA funds should be funneled towards those directives, and so.
I can comment on the public policy use of ARPA money for affordable housing. And the theory on the policy world is that there are significant permanent sources. Particularly via the low-income housing tax credit, the historic tax credit and other sources. That receive so much funding and there is a significant proposal to increase that in the Build Back Better Plan. That restrictions that may exist for affordable housing may be actually quite logical, although I do not know for sure that they are prohibited.
Hey, let, check it out within Town Hall, you, you know, we're gonna talk to. Chris? The Parking Commission report.
Yeah. I just noticed it was submitted, would you like to discuss it? Well, so. Happy to, so, so Keith Ritchie, I'm not sure if everyone on the commission saw the document sent by Keith. It has some familiar requests, I recognize them from my time on the Parking Commission, I can describe them to you without referencing the document. The first is increasing our fee in lieu of parking. The amount. In the Parking Commission's perspective is. Too low, in so many words, uh, it hasn't been adjusted up in a number of years, so that's one consideration. The other second request is the telephone lot. That's off Cherry Street, I think everyone knows where that is. Pursuing a purchase of that as incremental parking. Within a funding scenario. There are other investments around. Additional lighting and pathway and signage for parking, wayfinding, so that for people. Arriving in town as visitors that they could find parking easily and navigate it such that it would be a reduction of traffic. So you push them to the peripheral lots, whether it be Locust Center, et cetera, uh, so they can better navigate town. And I think the last one. Is the EVs, which I'm keen on, as you, I think, all know. And so that is the idea that we implement some sort of. Positive zoning towards encouragement of EV infrastructure in buildings, both commercial and residential.
And, you know, my view on the EVs is that I think that would be a good topic for Krista's subcommittee. Since it's ultimately her subcommittee, which is, you know, think of it as the. The brainstorming, planning aspect, these would be the regulations, so, I mean, that would be my view.
Yeah.
Then I. How would you encourage that on the residential side?
It's, it's a question. I don't know whether you would. Put some sort of incentive, you know, I think. You know, Kristen and I were, were, were thinking about how to discuss this, is, it's kind of like John Chris's commentary around native planting, you know, how do you encourage those? Those positive contributions, whether it be an all-electric building or an EV in the, in the garage. You know, do you give some sort of incremental allowance for X, Y, and Z? As a compensatory element to a developer for. You know, pre-wiring a garage for a two forty circuit, it's not that expensive, right, it's probably. Very little within cost of new construction. But it's about pushing the town towards that direction. And so I.
If, if it's a single-family house and you're building it as a right, really, that would fall under building code. And so you can simply change the building code, which is not our. Our bailiwick to someone else's and simply say that building code will require something along those lines. If it's, uh, for example, uh, construction of a multi-family or a commercial building. That falls under our turf and we did this, remember with the library, we required that there would be an EV charging station, they. Two of those handicap spots and one has to be EV, so we certainly can do that. And so it, it's often, if, if you ask for something, we, we get our hand in, if, if you don't, you know, we, we kind of don't. And so. For new construction, that's something that certainly could be done, other things would fall under building code and, you know, we can. Have someone, that's, that's other people's job to figure out the building code.
Yeah, I mean, I just think that. It'd be good for us at the subcommittee level to have conversations about where we want to go with this. Because I feel like right now we do it a little bit ad hoc, somebody comes and we say, well, what about solar panels, what about native plantings, what about EV chargers, and, I mean. Lynn knows us kind of well enough by now to know that, to anticipate these questions, but I think it'd be fair for applicants to have that sort of documented that this is. The policy of the commission, this is the direction we're headed in, so that, you know, it's not just us kind of throwing things at them when they show up here, that it's. Kind of put down on paper before they come.
Native plantings are already in the Planet Conservation Development, they're mentioned, now the language is a little wishy-washy. So it can be strengthened, but it's, it's there in, in black and white, EV is not really there and solar is not, it's sort of there, I mean. Been discussions about what to do with other types of alternative energy, the discussions with Lynn regarding wind power, there are a couple of those in town. On private property and she's nodding her head, uh, and so, we don't have anything explicit on this.
Right.
It kind of falls under some other regulation as opposed to something specific. And something specific would seem to be a better idea than sort of it somehow fell under something somewhere and that's how it's being adjudicated. But, but also, not only to make things clear, if someone wants to do it, we know exactly where to go to see what the rules are. But also i- in order to try to make it easier for people to do certain things. We think that it's a good idea to make it easier for people to put solar panels on their house. With some explicit rules that say you can do it as a right if you meet, you know, conditions A, B, and C, similar with. Small wind power, which many places have, we have again, one or two in town that have sort of appeared. You know, what do we do with geothermal too? And so forth, and so given some of these new technologies, it, it's a bit of maybe catch-up, but having something explicit. On that might be, might be a useful, a useful thing, so not only that people know what the rules are, but that. We, we try to make the. Decrease the number of hoops that we. Uh, decrease the number of hoops that we jump through. So we'll facilitate the installation of these types of facilities.
Makes a lot of sense to me. And one of the things, I mean, one of the ideas that we discussed in our EV um task force with Keith Ritchie was this notion of um. Thinking about different levers and dials was this notion of if a commercial. Property owner were to put in a EV charger that they'd get a two-year, one thousand dollar annual tax credit, property tax credit. So that the town basically give him a thousand dollars discount per year. So. If it costs, say, three thousand dollars to install that EV charger, that the town through a, a tax credit would. Would essentially fund some of that, which. Because the town to install it would cost much more because of prevailing wage and all of the other hoops that we would need to jump through. To put something in place. So actually having it installed in the private way is actually much cheaper. So I was thinking in a town scenario with a private residence, um, to ask that question is. You know, if they were to reach a certain R factor on insulation, or if they were a leave-designed building, do we give them a. You know, whatever, a fifteen percent credit on your building permit. I'm just thinking about like, what is the give-take uh on these things that. Would potentially create some incentives or some sort of recognition of that effort. So, lots of, lots of possibilities there.
Okay, uh, so. Just very quickly, um. On the fee and loop, the, and Keith and I have debated this over the years. Um, but just to understand the logic of the commission historically, I'm not saying it's right, but let me give you the logic. Is. Outside planners, um. Such as Glenn Chowder have told us, so this is me, this is planners, have told us that our parking requirements are. Very conservative. Meaning we require more parking of applicants than many towns. So why do you guys do that? And the, the, the philosophy has been it gives us negotiating power. Okay. Better to be in a position to give up parking because you can't require somebody, it's going to be hard to require somebody to give you more parking when you're under parked. So that's very much the method of the madness of having the parking toolbox with things like fee and look. The second issue though, to your point, is well, why not increase the cost? And the feedback we've gotten is that if we dramatically increase the cost. The developers will do it. So even though the cost of the parking space per, you know, whatever study somebody has, maybe fifty-five thousand. Which is maybe what Keith said to them, I can't remember. Um, in most scenarios, they're not going to pay fifty-five thousand bucks of, of space. So that's the problem we've had, Chris. Um, so it's not as if, you know, we want to give away free parking effectively. No. Um, but that's the method of madness. But, you know, it's something that we can debate, but, but that's, that's the method. Okay, let's uh, let's, let's uh get an exit strategy. Your item number twelve, approval of the minutes, October twenty-six, two thousand twenty-one, regular meeting. Do I have a motion approval of the minutes?
I moved to approve.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
Great, uh, John Goodwin, I vote yes. John Chris?
Yes.
Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
Dan Radman?
Uh, I wasn't here for that meeting, so.
Okay, uh, Clarence Tascornia?
Yes.
So you already.
No, okay, okay.
Um, uh, so Mr. Radman can vote because he did watch the tapes. Uh, Ken Turner?
Yes.
Vic Ward?
Yes.
Bill Williams?
Yes.
Arthur Cassavan?
Yes.
Okay, carries. Okay, everybody have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.